Time is five forty-two P M. I would like to call our work session to order. Mister Parker, could you please call the roll?
Yes. Ms. Daniels. Ms. Davis.
Present.
Ms. Green.
Present.
Mister Jones.
Here.
Ms. Rawls.
Present.
Mister Rodriguez.
Present.
Ms. Bowers.
Present, thank you. Before we begin, just a few housekeeping notes in terms of our meeting agenda. We will begin with the business of the Administration Committee. Your agenda notes that you'll hear a quarterly report first from the Bureau of Information Technology, but we will go out of order a little bit and begin with the quarterly report for the Bureau of Communications, followed by the quarterly report for the Bureau of Information Technology. Additionally, Resolution Eight of two thousand and twenty-four will be tabled until next week's work session. So that will be the February twenty-seventh work session of City Council. Okay, so let's get started. We'll begin with the Administration Committee. The first order of business is the quarterly report for the Bureau of Communications.
Counsel, good evening.
Good evening.
A handful of you have just put together a brief description of what the Communications Bureau does. For a handful of you, you've heard this spiel before, but for our new members, it's a pleasure of mine to give a brief description of the Bureau of Communications and what we do. We are in charge, as you can see on the screen. We're in charge of all the graphic, photo, video, audio information services that gets transmitted out throughout the city. We are in charge of the city's three-one-one desk, which in the fourth quarter of two thousand and twenty-three solved a hundred and fifty tickets, which was the most that we had put together all year, which something that we are very proud of. We are in charge of all press engagement, so news releases, media advisories, online social media communications as well. The Bureau of Communication manages all informational events and campaigns that you see kind of scattered throughout the news. We also maintain Channel Twenty, which is the government-access cable television channel and station. We also manage relationships between adjacent government agencies to ensure compliance with the city's cable television franchise agreement. I know there might be a few questions about that later on in this report, but I will be happy to address those the best that I possibly can. Towards the end of two thousand and twenty-three, our main project was putting together a production of our annual holiday parade. And our small team succeeded in capturing two hours of live content. We used four cameras, including for the very first time, a live remote camera, which allowed access throughout the middle of the parade. We did run into a couple of small technical issues in terms of camera connections, which we were able to troubleshoot and fix during the broadcast. We also started taping our new segment titled Ten Questions, which shines a spotlight on city employees. This also includes the jobs that they do and, more importantly, who they are as personalities. What you see on the screen right now is our first edition, which we did with Denise Hill, Director of Building and Housing. We invite council members to participate in this, and in fact, I already heard back from Councilman Jones, who said that he'd be happy to schedule a time, and I think we've already started that process. So for the rest of council, there is an open invitation to participate in a segment like this. W H B G continued producing content promoting the day-to-day operations of the city of Harrisburg, including but not limited to, some of the pictures you see here, our semi-annual tree planting event, public works storm preparation, the installation of the city's first outdoor Christmas tree in twenty-five years, and events like the Bash of the Brownstone Halloween Party and the city's New Year's Eve program. The Communications Bureau also welcomed in Jeff Washington to the team as an atrium receptionist. Jeff was previously a member of the facilities team and brings joy and optimism everywhere he goes. We have really enjoyed having him and Ms. Ayesha Hernandez be our team at the front of the Martin Luther King Junior City Government Center every day. In addition to that, multilingual specialist Melissa Mejones Ortiz started offering free conversational Spanish courses to residents as part of a six-week pilot program. She hopes to start a conversational Spanish class for city employees this year as well, as well as teaching a conversational English class to non-English-speaking city residents. These programs are in the workshop development stage currently. The city's three-one-one system, we can tell you, we mentioned at the beginning, it is working. In the fourth quarter of last year, we helped solve a hundred and fifty tickets. That's just in the last quarter alone, which was a high for the year, and we ended two thousand and twenty-three with zero pending tickets. Now, with a surplus of funds that we had towards the end of the fourth quarter of last year, the Communications Bureau made it a top priority to improve the quality for visitors coming into the atrium at the M L K Building. We designed and purchased a giant welcome banner, which hangs over the second-floor balcony. We also purchased two large monitors, which will be on both sides of the brick wall and the entranceway. This will highlight upcoming city events and showcase videos currently airing on Channel Twenty. In addition, we purchased sunblinds, which will be able to be used in the atrium bay windows in the, I would say, underused portion of the atrium, right outside of council chambers here. This will become the future location for press conferences and weddings, which looks out over downtown instead of the back of a wall. This will free up space also to put the M L K Museum display cases of photos and memorabilia to be more prominently featured in the center of the atrium space. This project is hopefully going to be completed in the next couple of weeks. Lastly, the Communications Bureau proudly partnered with Brian Majors and Major Prep Apparel, a Harrisburg-based minority business enterprise, suiting the communications team with new branded clothing. This will enhance the city's view at public events, and feedback from city employees has been tremendous, and we believe that we will be sending more orders to Major Prep in the near future. Updating you on a few goals that we had in last year. In quarter three, communications helped install an improved audiovisual system throughout council chambers, courtesy of Harrisburg-based company Illuminated Integration. While the pieces are in place to make Harrisburg City Council meetings stand out for residents, I personally have not been pleased with the implementation. We continue to receive justified complaints from residents, namely about poor audio quality. Some of these issues stem from using new equipment. Some issues stem from outdated Comcast equipment, which we hope to rectify with the new franchise agreement, and some stem from user error. These issues fall on me as director and will end with me as director. For example, when a piece was damaged during the public use of the council chambers during the New Year's Eve event, Illuminated Integration came out to reinstall parts of the equipment, and in doing so, the gain on the microphones was knocked down, hence some of the audio issues that we've been experiencing over the last couple of weeks. We discovered this after a few residents, rightfully so, reached out to council and myself and Illuminated fixed this issue by helping us out last week. They're on the phone with us. They're making an in-person visit later this week to make sure everything is squared away. And as we sit here right now, audio should sound fine on microphones if you're listening on Channel Twenty or our YouTube channel. On a much brighter side, our production of the Harrisburg Holiday Parade was successful. We had more than three thousand views on that on YouTube and counting. We also increased our digital footprint with increases in viewership engagement and account likes on Facebook and YouTube, namely, which are the two areas which we are seeing the most growth, also doing more with Instagram as well. Twitter, it is a dying medium. We still use it to post important news, but in terms of engagement on Twitter, it's virtually nonexistent. That is pretty much it. There's a few other things that are listed on the quarterly, the printed-out quarterly report. But I can answer any questions that you might have. I did have one more slide here that I forgot about. Just a couple of things that we'll be talking about in the first quarter of two thousand and twenty-four that I'll be recapping in a few weeks when I'm back with my Q-one report. The completion of the atrium upgrades, the monitors using the open space by the windows for press events, that is at the height of it. We are in the process of looking into ways of redesigning HarrisburgPA.gov, or at the very least, making it more user-friendly. We have started the process of having live closed captioning for all council meetings. This will be functional once Comcast helps fix the fiber line issues. But in the meantime, YouTube has an auto captions feature, which we recently just discovered, and by transmitting our YouTube feed onto Channel Twenty, there will be captioning for anyone who is watching on Channel Twenty as well. And then the Comcast franchise agreement, that is a situation which we will need to have. According to the Law Bureau, we will need to have public meetings to address resident wants and needs, and then we will move forward with that. So at this time, I can answer any questions, hopefully, that you may have.
Thank you. I just have a few questions before opening the floor to my colleagues. First, regarding the closed captioning, it's my understanding that it's something that a viewer or user would have to opt into on YouTube. Is that correct?
It is my understanding that that is something they, I wouldn't say opt into, it's more so a button.
They have to take action. It's not just going to appear. They have to note or click on the closed caption symbol. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And how will that translate to Channel Twenty?
The feed that people will be seeing on, that is strictly for people that watch council meetings on YouTube. If you watch on Channel Twenty, you won't have to do anything, because we are clicking it on our end, and the feed that people will be seeing on Channel Twenty for the short term will be the YouTube feed that is coming out of the Channel Twenty studios. So again, if you're watching on Channel Twenty, you won't have to do anything. If you watch on YouTube, there is a button that encourages auto captioning, which we are asking people, if you are watching on YouTube and require closed captioning, just click that button, and closed captioning is available.
Thank you for clarifying. You mentioned the Comcast agreement. So what is the status of the agreement, and when do you intend to host these public meetings or hearings that are required?
So we heard in a follow-up last Friday from Comcast representatives again, and they promised they would get us what is a package of data and information we've been waiting for by the end of this coming week. Depending on the content of that information will sort of drive the next step. I don't think it's going to change the course very much, but our due diligence requires us to review it. The City Council can have the public meeting. I mean, I think they're just, the language is getting a little muddled, but the City Council can have the public meeting, just like you would. So once it's introduced as a proposed franchise agreement, that would be the public input at that point, if they were happy or unhappy people were with the proposal. And whether that's the general public, whether that's the council members, or, you know, or anyone else.
Thank you. And then my final question, you mentioned that the Bureau has apparel that was designed by Major Prep.
Yes.
I'm just curious how Major Prep was selected, or how did you engage in the new partnership?
So towards the end of last year, I recognized the need for us to have updated city branded apparel. The polos that we had were the outdated logo. We didn't have any winter apparel whatsoever, and I started asking around from the Parks Department, because I know they have constantly updated material. Hey, who are some people to reach out to? I knew from my time on the TV side of things, the easy thing to do would be to go to L L Bean. They're a well-known national brand. They make good clothing, but it also would have cost a lot of money. And one of the names that was brought up was Brian Majors and Major Prep. And I did not realize at the time the connection, that he is former Councilman Major's brother. Did not, I had no idea. But we had a meeting. He came to my office, gave me a quote. It fell well under, again, we're just buying for six people, so it fell well under any type of bid process quote, and we just hit it off immediately. And what I realized afterwards in talking to him is, while we were happy with the product that he put together for us, he was infinitely more happy that he was able to partner with the city. Like, that meant something to him. And that meant a lot to me, seeing that reaction on his face. So when I started wearing some of the gear around the city, I was wearing the hoodie that he provided to us when I came in here earlier today. It caught eyes, and people were, where did you guys get this? Who did this for you? And I mentioned Brian, and, oh, wow, okay, we have to get it too. And so we're hopefully going to be doing more orders for Brian in the near future of some of the stuff that we have with the new logo. And I hope it is the start of a really nice, long partnership and friendship.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions. I'm going to open the floor now to my colleagues, who may have some additional questions for you. I'll begin with Councilman Jones. Any questions?
No, I don't have any questions at this time.
Thank you. Councilman Rodriguez, any questions?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Director Mazel, for joining us. I just want to say I think it was a good idea to go with local business, bringing that pride and spirit back. Everyone knows the brand. Great idea. Kudos to the communications team for pulling that trigger. Thank you for that. I do have one question. When we had this area kind of revamped, there was notice to the hot mic that was always on, and we were told eventually it would be worked out. Is there any update for that?
Currently, that microphone is not on. And what I can do is put a notice of some sort that says that that there is a potential hot mic situation, but that is not on right now. I know there have been some instances in the past where it might have been accidentally on, but that is only a, called a break glass in case of emergency microphone. If someone is, if a microphone, if one of your microphones, for whatever reason, isn't working, or someone is standing off-mic and their audio is not being picked up, that microphone is strong enough to pick up pretty much anywhere in the room. But as it is currently right now, that microphone is not on.
Got you. Thank you. And then what's your take on how we can leverage our social media interactions with more actual engagement for the city council, administration, et cetera?
If I'm understanding the question correctly, I believe that information, as long as we continue to spread factual information, people are, that is, that is our job, to spread information. Now, that being said, there's a lot of what comes first, chicken or the egg. How do you get people to come in so that you can give them that factual information? And I've tried to add different ways, whether it be through creative graphics or different types of eye-popping content that go out to, that find their way into the algorithm of someone's news feed, for example, so that they see what the city of Harrisburg is doing, they like, they click, and now they are in, they are engaged. So it's a little bit of both, but I think the key with any social media is delivering news and content factually in a way that gets people's attention. And that is, I don't want to say that it is a struggle by any means. It is a challenge, though. And especially keeping up with how constantly changing the world of social media evolves, staying up to date on trends, staying up to date on what people are doing nowadays on social media, while also keeping true to ourselves and what our brand and our message is. That's something that I deal with every day, and definitely a challenge, but one that I embrace.
Thank you. No further questions. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rawls, any questions?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for being here, Director Mazel, and I don't have any questions. Your report was detailed enough, and so just thank you for the work you're doing in the city.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Green, any questions?
Thank you, President Bowers. I don't really have many questions. I did have, I guess, kind of a question slash comment on the closed captioning option. I know during COVID, when we were doing virtual meetings, closed captioning was turned on, and then for some reason, I want to say it was a potential legal reason, it was turned off. Will we have the same issue? I believe that was automated as well, so I don't know if the same automated feature is going to have the same issues or not.
Neil, I'm not sure your microphone is on.
I see. As far as we know, closed captioning is a developed technology. You were dealing with a Zoom printout, and it did not actually reflect what people said in the meeting. It said some very colorful things, but it wasn't what anyone said in the meeting. So that's why it kind of went away.
And let me just add, one of the things that is hardest to do, and Solicitor Grover just briefly touched on this, is you can have captioning, but what does it matter if the captions aren't accurate? What we just did, we put in the invoice today as part of our partnership with Cablecast, which is the group that puts out, you have Comcast, which provides the Channel Twenty for cable viewing, but Cablecast is the company that actually makes it happen. It's hard to describe, and I apologize in advance, but Cablecast is what is the mechanism to get it to Comcast. And Cablecast has live captioning available. We just put in that invoice today. It is something that we're not going to start using until we have the fiber line, which is going to hopefully be part of the Comcast franchise agreement update. But once that happens, those are, by all accounts, because Cablecast is a well-known, reputable national company that we work with and have worked with for years, those live captioning, those live captions that will be going out on Channel Twenty, on the linear Channel Twenty feed, will be accurate, good captioning. We just put in that invoice today. It is a, does not matter how expensive it is. It is a necessary cost and something that we are happy to do and is necessary to do.
Thank you very much. I think that it will be a great service to our residents. I know it's something that residents had asked for before, so I look forward to seeing it happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Davis, any questions?
Yes. Good evening, Director Mazel. Thank you for being here this evening. And congratulations on the zero pending tickets at the end of two thousand and twenty-three. That's amazing. What are some pros and cons that you see that could potentially affect the public with the current franchise agreement conversations coming up?
I think one of the biggest positives, I think there's two main positives. There's no negative in it. I would say very strongly that there's no con or negative in any of this. I would say the biggest positive is the fact that we get to hear from the public in organized fashion. And that's not to say that we don't hear from the public right now, but we want to know, this is your public channel. What do you want out of this public channel? What type of content do you want on this public channel? Because once Comcast hears that, then that will help us and them determine, all right, what type of equipment upgrades are necessary moving forward. And one of that, I would hope, would be, well, we need to have better audio on council meetings. We need to have more consistent video on the Channel Twenty feed for council meetings. Okay, well, then hopefully Comcast sees that and says, oh, we need to replace the fiber line. We need upgraded materials there. That's it more than anything else. It's hearing from the public and getting ideas on what the public wants out of their channel. It's, I just help operate it, but it is not my channel. It is the city of Harrisburg's channel. And we look forward to hearing what they have to say, what city residents have to say, what matters to them.
Thank you. I don't have any further questions.
Thank you. Councilwoman Daniels, any questions?
Not right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we will receive the quarterly report for the Bureau of Information Technology.
Good evening, City Council. Steve Bortner, IT Director, and I'm going to do the fourth quarter two thousand and twenty-three update. First, I'll give you a brief description of the Bureau. The Bureau is responsible for the administration of the city's blend of mainframe network and cloud-based computer systems. These systems are utilized by the general government, Departments of Administration, Community and Economic Development, Public Safety, and Public Works. We provide technical support and maintenance for the network of PCs, laptops, and mobile devices. We're responsible for the installation, maintenance, and troubleshooting of servers, routers, switches, and firewalls. We partner with local, state, and national organizations to extend and expand technological capabilities within the city. Evaluating emerging technologies and vendor offerings assists with the process of modernizing and streamlining the systems that are deployed throughout the city. Some of our daily responsibilities include monitoring and resolving help desk tickets that are submitted through the support portal. We monitor, configure, and troubleshoot server activity. We monitor virus activity and cyber threats. We implement printer services, and we add and upgrade software as needed. I'll give you a high-level overview of the quarterly summary for the fourth quarter. I mentioned the support portal during the quarter. The team resolved seven hundred and twelve tickets that were submitted through that portal. The big initiative we're working on right now is the Operation Municipal Migration Project, which most of you know is our initiative to migrate and modernize our systems off the mainframe platform. We've been working on it for quite a few months now. The first phase, it's a six-phase project. The first one was the financials phase, which we implemented at the beginning of two thousand and twenty-three and was very successful. So there's five additional phases, four of which we're actively working on, one that has not yet been started. So the ones that we are currently working on is the human capital management phase, and we're currently scheduled to implement that sometime in the second quarter of this year. Another active phase is our tax billing and collections phase, and that is also scheduled to be implemented in the second quarter. Those two have been taking a little bit longer than we would have liked. It's a struggle sometimes to balance your day job with the migration to a new system. So finding the right balance of commitment so that things can continue to moving has been a little bit of a struggle. Another phase is the licenses, permits, and codes enforcement, and that one also is scheduled to be implemented in the second quarter, and that one's pretty much staying on course at this point. The last active phase is asset maintenance, and that's kind of a new one, where we didn't have a system at all, and we actually implemented that within the V M C on the fifth of February. So it seems like that's been pretty well received. We've purchased iPads for them to work on their work orders, and it feels like they are very engaged in the process and very well received. and they, it feels like they are very engaged in the process and very well received. Um, and we can add additional departments as we go if they have inventory or assets that they would like to track. So, uh, there's a couple that we're probably going to be working on in the near future, but all the groundwork is in place, uh, to do that. And the one phase that we have not started yet is our utility billing and collections. We plan to get started sometime in the second quarter with that phase and anticipate that that should be done by the end of the year. Um, so far, there have been about, uh, forty city employees who have, uh, spent time working on the project. Um, and of those forty employees, they've, uh, reported about 6,700 hours to the project. So we try and track internal time that we are working on it by phase and by person so that if anybody wants to see that, we have that available to them. Um, and as far as the costs go, the approved POs and contracts that we have was 1.407 million dollars. Um, so far, we've spent 1.064 million, and that, uh, leaves us with 343,000 left to spend on the remaining phases of the project. Annual goal updates, other than the ones I just mentioned, uh, during the fourth quarter, we implemented, um, a new network file backup system, and that, um, gives us some additional cybersecurity protections. Um, we began the implementation of our core switches, core switch replacement, and that is going to eliminate some aging hardware that we have in our data center and a single point of failure for the entire network. And then the last one there, we implemented endpoint and identity security to provide stronger antivirus and malware protection, and it's constantly monitoring the dark web for, uh, any user accounts that may be compromised. So the first and third bullet items, they, uh, came out of a recommendation from the Pennsylvania National Guard based on a cybersecurity assessment that they did, uh, during, uh, second quarter of last year. As far as year-to-date spend for the Bureau, um, the 2023, uh, budget for salaries was 557,000, and for the year, 94.86% of that was expended. Um, for the services accounts, the budget was 863,000, and we expended 90.87% of that. Uh, the supplies accounts, the budget was 429,000, and we expended 73.25% of that. And the capital accounts, the budget was 1.219 million, and 73.14% was expended. And during the year, there were no significant deviations from the planned budget. Uh, as far as special projects and grants, um, there were no, uh, special projects, uh, that we worked on that involved grants during the fourth quarter. And the updates on the other ongoing projects, uh, were identified earlier in the report. Uh, department vacancy update, um, as of the end of the year, we had one open position, which was our GIS administrator position. Uh, the good news is that position was filled on January 16th, and our GIS administrator, Andrea, has been doing a great job since she's been here. And finally, community engagement, interaction, and communication. Uh, we don't do a lot of that as a, a rule, so during the fourth quarter, there was no, uh, community engagement or interaction. And that concludes my report. I'll open it up for questions.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your thorough report. Um, I don't have any questions. Um, I thought it was pretty clear and concise. I'll open the floor up to my colleagues who may have some additional questions. I'll begin with Councilwoman Daniels. Any questions?
Not right now, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Davis?
No, I don't have any questions. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Vice President Green, any questions?
I don't have any questions. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rawls, any questions?
Thank you. Um, good evening, Director Bortner. Thank you for being here. I don't have any questions, just excited to move into the 21st century with our technology. I know it's been a process, um, and some things are out of date, but I'm glad we're working on them. I think just get excited to see them come to fruition. Um, I will ask one quick question, though. How will, um, residents know that some new things are happening with, like you said, like the taxes or the billing? Like what kind of communication will they get from that?
Um, there will probably be some inserts in some of the bills prior to going live with the new system. So, um, at some point in the near future, there will be citizen self-service sites that they can go to to see their bills, pay their bills, sign up for, um, electronic billing, things like that, which is something we currently do not have today within the system. So, um, not only will that save the city money by not having to mail the bills, but it'll provide that immediate access and pretty much availability whenever they want to see it. So that'll be a little farther down the road, but yes, that will be coming.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you. Councilman Rodriguez, any questions?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. No questions. Thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you. Councilman Jones, any questions?
Um, no questions. Uh, a question was previously asked about, uh, the billing. I think that would save a lot of money and some trees, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have the quarterly report for the Office of Equity and Compliance.
All right, good afternoon, good evening, rather, Council. Um, we'll start off with the Office of Chief Equity and Compliance, just a... Okay. We'll go back. Just overall, uh, my job description as was put in the budget. Uh, what I did was, uh, kind of rehashed what I did the last time we were here for the sake of our, our new council members, as well as that having been my first, uh, report before council. And so it kind of rolls all into one. So for the sake of, uh, discussion, I guess, I'll just read through it. And I wanted to highlight the fact that when it comes to the Equity and Compliance Office, it's not merely just the, uh, minority-owned and controlled businesses that, that we're focused on, it's overall equity in every aspect of the city government. So we're reasoning, planning, organizing, you know, directing, managing. In essence, um, I, I thought last time I was here, it was kind of, uh, pigeonholed that it was specifically for, uh, minority businesses. However, as the Equity Round, the Mayor's Equity Roundtable, uh, illuminates, it's way more than that in terms of what my office responsibilities are, uh, with regards to ADA compliance, other things that, uh, we've been meeting on, whether it's affirmative action, uh, and/or other compliance, uh, areas of compliance that, uh, should have checks and balances. Uh, we've been working, uh, for the last two years, you know, highlighting those things. So I'll just go through the slides and then open it up for questions. Um, since our last meeting, since the last time I was here before you, I should say, uh, I have spoken with several council members with regards to, uh, data. And the data did, uh, go back to exactly, um, availability, utilization, in my words, in terms of businesses that the city were actually engaged with, the amount of dollars that was spent on a monthly basis, and I turned that in. And so in the larger packet, uh, that you received, all of that information is in there, uh, for the public, where I notate that there's copies available. We, we have copies, uh, here tonight as well, just to go through the monthly, um, data in terms of what the city spent every month, uh, through 2023. And of that spend, how much went to minority businesses that we actually know and that are, um, either self-certified and overall certified. And so that, that is the information I'd allude to. And bullet point number two, where, um, uh, where I, where I highlighted, um, the copies being available. Uh, one of the things I did want to highlight was the importance of, you know, the, um, Center, our partnership with the Center for Independent Living, um, and the work that we're doing in, uh, in that space, just quite frankly, right now, is a listening session, because there's a lot of areas, uh, as you alluded to earlier, in terms of the closed captioning and other things that we need to be working on, uh, whether it's Channel 20 and/or, you know, sharing resources and ideas. As you can see, uh, down in, in the final bullet, where I talked about having meetings with various staff, I'm sorry, various, uh, colleagues in terms of directors. One of the things that came out, as you see, is, uh, which was one of my 2020 goals, was, uh, partnering, talking more with legal, around discussing some of the duties and office, uh, responsibilities, uh, relative to, uh, reacclimating, acclimating the Human Relations Commission, ADA compliance questions that continue to circle the city, um, and working more closely with HR and the federal infrastructure and Justice 40 resources that are out there, especially since we have that 283 widening project going on in terms of having local participation, minority businesses, and, um, as such. Uh, just as a quick reminder, we talked about, uh, when I was here before you, you, uh, last time, uh, working more closely with procurement, uh, compliance, and of course, the city Solicitor's Office. I'm glad to report that the Munis piece, the Tyler Technologies piece, um, our office is fully integrated into that. You heard earlier about the various, um, stages that it was going to take, um, to get people onboarded or trained, et cetera. Uh, that was expedited since we last, I was last before you, so our office at least, you know, does have access. We're still learning. So we, it is, it is not at mastery right now, um, by long stretch, um, but we're, um, going through ongoing training as are other, uh, departments. And that leads into that piece about building a robust, overall robust MWDB plan, because I still, again, um, and I, I said it, you know, several times in our, our meetings with, uh, the various directors that our office met with. Co-Stars and other state-approved, um, uh, mechanisms are legitimate, you know, in terms of getting large work projects done on an emergency basis, et cetera. So there is value there. However, I also think, you know, when we're talking about equity, that, that shouldn't, in my words, always be used as the easy button. There should be other, um, opportunities for businesses that aren't always, um, accessible through Co-Stars to still have access to city business. Um, and that's a, that's a further conversation for another day. At fortifying a relationship, um, with, with overall the GBI, the, um, the gun violence intervention that is of course over with the police and that grant through, uh, Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency. We had great, uh, follow-up meetings since we last spoke with, uh, Mr. Angelo Craig and, uh, Captain Winder and others to make sure, um, again, that there's also an equity lens in terms of how that grant is, is going to be implemented throughout the city with regards to call-ins, arrests, et cetera, uh, like that. So... I'm just trying to go through the slides and then open up for questions. So of course, we don't have a budget. We comes, we come under the mayor's budget. Uh, so there's no, um, balance there. Um, special projects, et cetera, there's no real special projects, you know, coming out of our office. There's only two of us, so we're happy to be here. In terms of the community engagement, uh, we still work, even though Impact Harrisburg is in a state of dormancy, uh, we're still, I'm still on that board, and we're still working, um, through part, we're partnering with an entity that has to remain nameless right now until they make the announcement. Uh, that's pretty much going to carry forth our duties that we had, um, uh, subscribe to us as Impact Harrisburg. A couple of tasks, a couple of things I've been involved with, the, um, our office has been involved with, obviously, is the, um, the things listed here. But overall, I think that, of course, the Parent Advisory Council is meeting tomorrow again, and, um, just being present. I think, um, again, um, last time I was here, we talked a lot about, um, travel or, you know, going places on behalf of the mayor. Um, I'm still doing those things, um, still bringing back, you know, information, knowledge, um, additional strategies and things, to advise or on from an equity lens. And so those are still things that are in the wheelhouse, still things that, you know, are going to be upcoming, whether that's the Anti-Racist Development Institute that I'm involved with through Dickinson School of Law, or if it's going, talking about the National Council on Reinvestment, the National Reinvestment Council, um, that has, um, you know, a lot of resources to talk about, um, how to revitalize disinvested urban communities in particular, or rural communities. Those are still things that the mayor sent me to. The African-American Chamber of Commerce for, uh, Pennsylvania, New Jersey, and Delaware. Those are relationships with mayors and, and others, um, from throughout those states that we still network with and still being, bringing back evidence, best practices for us to consider telling them to meet our needs for our, uh, residents here in the city. So those are still things that, you know, I'm still going to be focused in on, and of course, will be reported out on into the, uh, during the next, uh, quarterly report. I'll leave that up. We're stopped there and open up for questions, but just to go back to, I know, uh, last time, it was a lot of gaps with regards to the data. And since then, I've turned that, that over, and I'll go back and simply say the reason why I was a little reluctant to turn over that data initially is because I didn't think it was done with fidelity in terms of, we didn't have everything together, and I didn't want to present just numbers, just for the sake of presenting numbers to council. I have way more confidence in the data now. I have way more, uh, I'll say checks and balances in place now from, uh, having the, the open dialogue and discussion with, um, uh, Mike Hughes and Mergantau to now having access to, um, Munis to see that there's, for example, there's, and this question might come up later, but there's varying, um, aspects of pulling minority, or pulling businesses from the tax side in that office versus with the Munis. So the things that were onboarded and brought over from the old mainframe is basically tracking everything that was ever, any business that was ever receiving a dime. But now the, the list that, uh, Mergantau has are those who are currently paid up for taxes and don't owe, you know. So those are two different lists. So availability, if you will, using a disparity study term, is, it, it differs. So you might be in business in Munis, but you might not be available because you haven't paid up your taxes, et cetera. So, you know, until that transpires, that office isn't really counting you. And I'll stop there.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying, uh, the data. We know that was a little point of contention last year, but thank you for clarifying and for sharing. Although you weren't as confident in it, we still need to know, right? Because I think there's always room for improvement. So we need to know exactly where we are and work together to improve upon that data. I don't have any questions. Um, thanks also for, uh, the community engagement, interaction, and communication pieces. If everyone hasn't realized, we, we are utilizing a different template for our, uh, quarterly reporting. Um, we hope to sort of synthesize the information a little bit, but ensure that we're hitting the high points and, um, providing that transparency that, uh, residents and quite frankly, council members were seeking. So thank you for, uh, your list of community engagement as well. I'll open the floor, uh, to my colleagues. I'll begin with Councilman Jones. Any questions?
Yes. Thank you for your report. I just have a couple of questions. Um, I was reading it, and the last part that you were talking about, as far as the numbers being there, because I think I've seen something where the total spend was like 35 million, somewhere roughly around that. Am I correct?
Not off the top of my head, but yeah.
Is those, do you have that on the slide, though?
I didn't. That, that was probably something, well, I don't have it on this slide currently.
Yeah, I've seen it was like roughly 35 million in, um, a total spend.
You're right. It's actually in the, um, in the report, so 35 million, forty, forty-two thousand, six hundred, thirty-six dollars and forty-nine cents.
So then the WMBE spend was around 2 million, somewhere 2 million eight, 28?
24, 2, 2 million, 465,000, 351 dollars and 51 cents.
All right. So now, when I was reading through, uh, your report that I had a hard copy of, I was looking at it and looking at the language, and, um, I think you tried to touch on it a little bit earlier far as with, uh, the new Munis system coming in. But my ask is this, when we look at the word minority, that can, so many people fit inside of that category. It could be, um, Caucasian women, uh, LBGPTQ. It could be Caucasian women, LGBTQ, all of those different things. So when I was looking at the percentage, the last number at the page, I think it was 7.3 total, right?
So that, and that's another point of clarification, going back. And so the initial numbers that I turned over were 7.3. But when we went back and did a deeper dive, it's actually 7% flat. Because there was a company in your county that should not have been counted.
Okay.
And so we had to back that number out for about two months. Not about, it was two months.
So even looking at that number, I'm still looking at it. And this is maybe not to you for the blame, but I'm just asking this question because out of 35 million, and then we, again, let me go back to the WMBE and the use of the word minority. So in your report, you had minority spend, and that's where those numbers were lining up in. So I'm concerned with that 7%, which was previously 7.3. But even, those numbers are completely low for me. And I'm just wondering how we as council can help bring those numbers up. But I'm looking for diversity inside of diversity. When you look at the minority spend, again, you could be all of these different categories. And I'm looking particularly for black and brown in the city of Harrisburg where that spends. So if we break that 7% down, what do you think that percentage would be for local contractors and vendors that we're using, I mean, using that spend on?
We had a conversation on record. I'm not going on record with that. I'm just saying this, you're not the only one that's concerned about, in particularly, local black and brown spend. That's what I pride myself on. That's what I made my reputation in the city on. So and when we're talking about utilization of language, when you're talking about LGBTQ businesses, et cetera, that's where you, that's where you straddle that, going from minority to diverse business, which is totally different. And so when we started talking about the disparity study that's on the table, which is what we're moving into, they're measuring diverse businesses. And so that's white males that are veterans as well that are counting that number. So to your point, I agree. And we can work closely on that in terms of truly disaggregating the numbers. Further, once we really get that. And that's, those are questions I expected, which is why I was reluctant to present, you know, numbers before, which is, which is fine. I mean, that doesn't mean the work's not being done internally. It's just now that we're public with it, I mean, that's, I'm here for it. So if that's what we're doing, that's why I'm in this position. And it does start with me. And well, it starts with the mayor. Let me just say that. I report to the mayor. So she's getting the raw data, the raw numbers and everything else. Those are the things that you're asking for, they're there. I don't sugarcoat it. I'm just not going to put people on personal blasts as colleagues. When, to your point, I know we can do better. And I'm agreeable to that.
So, and again, just for clarification, what I'm saying about the language, again, because when I see minority spend inside of the report, but then at the end, it just says, I know minority women, business enterprises, and things of that nature. So that's what I was talking about, the language. Other question I have is the utilization of co-stars. And this is just for public knowledge. Can you explain how co-stars work? So some people that may not be aware of co-stars can understand how they can even apply in these areas to also try to get some of those numbers up.
So that's a state, that's a state mechanism that allows, quite frankly, when you have, like, for example, I use Public Works. You know, there's a lot of emergencies that go on and some vendors that, you know, are already vetted. These are businesses that are already vetted, that could do large projects, small projects, but on an emergency basis and/or, you know. For example, I tried to go out and find some tire manufacturers, some minority tire manufacturers. I've been as far down as Kentucky and really, and found any, because I was trying to get police, I was trying to get fire, you know, to kind of diversify who they were spending with after looking at the numbers. But when you, when you do find someone in that field, when I found someone in that field, the prices, you know, were different, not to say they won't still be considered, but a co-star already has a list. And I called it the easy button. There's no disrespect to them, but it's already, like the Cliff Notes, these are the businesses that we're able to, that's already been vetted. These are the businesses that are bonded, and these are the businesses, you know, that can meet our needs. And so that's a state-approved entity or option that a lot of businesses and particularly municipalities take advantage of.
Super. Other thing that I had, again, because this was, this one was confusing me too, Merk, and I looked it up. I was trying.
It's not, I created it. Mayor's Equity Roundtable.
To the medical field.
I apologize. No, so I thought I spelled it out in there.
But other than that, man, again, I would just offer, how could we, as a body, try to work together to get those numbers up? Because I think they're, I mean, we all know that they're low. I mean, doing the diversity study is only something that we had to get on paper to see what we already knew. So, you know, I just want to know how we can work together and try to get those numbers up because I see so much happening in our city, so much building, so much construction going on, but there's no jobs.
Yeah, and a lot of that is private. A lot of that is private. A lot of that is, you know, I think at one point, I talked about Section 3, which was a HUD regulation, which they watered down as well, where it used to be you had to do X amount. Well, now it's sort of kind of best effort type language. It's not really controlling the teeth. It doesn't really have the teeth that it used to to ensure when things are done, for example, I'm saying Harrisburg Housing Authority in particular, when there's work being done in areas where I grew up at, like Hall Manor, who, you know, of course, there's a lot of individuals who need work, you know, and deserve work. Section 3 was a tool that could be utilized to actually engage those residents where that work was being done. And that language has been watered down. And I see a lot of it goes back to the Harvard case this past summer, in which affirmative action was addressed. But there's still some fight out here, I believe, to your point, if we really unify and push it, we can, we can see some different results. There's building permits or planning things that, you know, got to come before council in these places. And if you're serious about minority participation, ask those questions.
They're coming, trust me. The other, last question is this, I see in your job description, there's a lot of travel involved. I like to consider myself a traveling council person. But with the information that you're gathering, how useful is it for you? And when will some of it start to be implemented?
It's being implemented every day for the mere fact that the conversations we have internally with the administration, some of the things that she's sending down and over to the solicitor's office, then it comes down in legislation, whether you're talking about unifying and going to meet with the lieutenant governor and having access to information that everybody doesn't get when they're in those meetings. These are all things that are synthesized by the mayor in the cabinet. And when we decide, you know, this is something she wants to move forward on, that travel that I do, that information goes in there. It goes into my weekly reports that she gets every week. Then I want to be clear, until the last two times, I've been a part of city government for six years, six and a half years now. I've never turned in a receipt. I've never been reimbursed for anything. I've always used my own vehicle except for the last three trips. I've never turned in mileage or anything else.
Okay. I didn't ask that.
No, no, that wasn't for you. That's for the record, in general. Because when we talk about travel, there's perks that comes along with that, if you want to say that, in terms of reimbursements and things. I'm a city employee, but I'm also a resident as a taxpayer. So I've took my own vehicle, you know.
So that's it. Thank you. I have no further questions. President Bowers.
Thank you. Councilman Rodriguez, any questions?
No questions, Madam President, but Director Singleton, I did receive a call from Philadelphia about some equitable options for the unhoused population. So I love to bring that to you sometimes. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rawls, any questions?
Thank you. And thank you for being here, Director Singleton. I just had, I actually had three questions. My first question was, how are, how is your office making sure that there is equity with the Broad Street Market project?
Great question. We're still, I guess the bids and things are going out now. There was questions that I raised before internally that is, I guess, you know, caused some pause on certain things and some deeper dives, which ultimately, you know, is going to yield results of inclusivity, we'll say.
Okay. And you're a part of the, are you a part of all the meetings that happen when it comes to it?
No, I'm not. I haven't been involved with the Broad Street Market on that level. No.
Okay.
But the topic comes up when we're having cabinet meetings, so.
Right. I would, I would think it'd be important for you to be a part of those meetings to help with the equity of that. So you know what's happening. And you can also bring then the information you have on businesses or when you're, like you said, when you do the visits to other places and seeing what they have, I think your information would be important within those meetings. So I would think you should be at them. I don't know if that has, if that's your call or the mayor's call, but I would love to see you being a part of those meetings so we can see that equity within the Broad Street Market for our residents and our contractors. My other questions were, I saw it said roll-in school mentor day, monthly engagement, and the Pennsylvania Act 114, Greater Fatherhood. I was just wondering what those two were, what you're doing.
So the rolling pieces, there's, eighth grade has had a bit of challenges, we'll say. And so there's several of us that volunteered when we got the call to say we would come over, you know, once a month. I've only participated one time so far. But the other one, when you're talking about Act 114, is to Greater Fatherhood Involvement Initiative, which is, as I said last time, it's an organization that was passed under the Wolf administration where we know there's a lot of resources available to mothers with regard, so it's not anti-mother or anything. It's just simply saying, just like there's resources available for father-focused, for mother-focused families, there needs to be more intentionality with father-focused as well regarding equity on that level. And so that's what this, that's what this is about. It's a statewide organization. It's following the map of Department of Health, which has six different regions throughout the state. And so there's going to be community-based resource centers from a father-focused lens, we'll say, in terms of leading families in those six regions. So that's what we're working on.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for answering those three questions. And I hope to see part of the meetings for the Broad Street Market. I will reach out to some people about that because that's part of us having equity within the city. It's a big project. So thank you. That's all I have.
Point noted.
Thank you. Vice President Green, any questions?
Good evening, Mr. Singleton.
Good evening.
Thank you for being here tonight. I don't really have many questions for you at the moment. This is just the fourth quarter report, correct? This isn't really the first quarter of 2024 report. So we're focused on the goals of 2023, not really the goals of 2024 yet, correct?
So I kind of blended them since I did, in essence, a year when I was last before you. It kind of bled over, you know, right now. So short of the lieutenant governor meeting, meeting with the various directors, colleagues, and asking the questions, for example, and getting Munis training, it blended together. So yeah, that's been the real focus in terms of the disparity study and starting a small work group, which was going to be announced and started on the 20th last week before we closed for snow. That's, those are the only additions.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Also, thank you for the data that you provided to us. I think that's very helpful and very important for us to be able to have access to. Is that something you plan to continue to send to us on like a monthly basis or?
Would you like it monthly? Sure.
Monthly would be great for me. I'm not sure about my other colleagues, but if I get it monthly, that would be great. I think that's all that I have for right now. I look forward to working with you to get some of these things to come to fruition in the next year.
Definitely. Likewise.
Thank you. Councilwoman Davis, any questions?
Thank you, President Bowers. Thank you for being here, Mr. Singleton. Your report is very thorough. I reached out to you and asked a couple of questions and they were answered. My other questions were answered tonight in reference to co-stars. I didn't know what exactly that platform was. So thank you for the clarification and thank you for being here. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you. Councilwoman Daniels, any questions?
Not right now.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Did you want me to leave the copies in case the public wanted those?
Sure. Yes, please.
I'll take another one, too. My email is not working.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution 5 of 2024. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes. Resolution 5 of 2024. A resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Reynolds Construction LLC, DBA, SiteLogic IQ to develop a comprehensive five-year capital improvement program.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Good evening. Your microphone is off.
Sorry. Good evening, President Bowers and members of City Council. As you know, in my past three quarterly reports, I was speaking of the five-year capital improvement program that we had planned to develop. We did a very thorough bid process and this particular firm has been selected. This firm, Reynolds SiteLogic, might sound a little familiar to you because they are headquartered here in the city of Harrisburg. And through their presentation, you'll see the amount of investments that they've made with the city of Harrisburg. So I will let, let them begin their presentation and the PowerPoint will speak for itself. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. First and foremost, my name is Andrew Zwali. I'm with SiteLogic. As Ms. Kelly mentioned, we're very excited to be here tonight and looking forward to giving you a brief presentation about the five-year capital improvement program and how we hope to help the city with their planning efforts as they move into the future. So first and foremost, a little bit about our company. As it was mentioned, our company began 30 years ago, actually, 1994, with roots in the city of Harrisburg. Our offices are still at Third and Vaughn Street in Uptown Harrisburg. We're very proud of our roots. We've spent many years working through various projects across the city. You'd probably have a hard time stumbling through the city without coming across something that we had the opportunity to work on. We're very proud of that, that history. Over the years, we've expanded to a much larger firm than what we started and it broadened our capabilities, which is why when the RFP came out for a five-year capital plan, we felt like we were the perfect fit. Not only do we feel like we have the planning expertise and the construction background, but also being here in the city, it felt really important for us to continue our relationship with various city entities and the city itself. So next slide here, you're going to see just a few of our different projects we've worked on. You'll see here a photo of the PHFA building on Front Street. But we've also had the privilege of working with Harrisburg University on their tower project that was just recently completed. In addition to that, we actually spent a long time going way back during the Capitol complex renovation. But more recently, like I mentioned, Harrisburg University, PHFA, and the UPMC Pinnacle Harrisburg Hospital. So that's some of our recent and local experience that we're very proud of. But, you know, I thought it would be helpful for you to understand kind of what, where our experience lies. Quickly, go over sort of our project team. As you can see here, you'll see some familiar faces that we will be serving as your project team. But on the left-hand side, it's not just the four of us. We're supported by a group of individuals that will help complete the assessment and prioritization effort that goes into your capital improvement plan. So that is a quick background about us. At this point, I'm going to turn over to my colleague Melissa, who's going to spend time explaining sort of what is a capital plan and how we at SiteLogic can help with the city's efforts in that regard.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everybody. So let's start with, next slide. What is a capital improvement plan, right? So simply put, it is a community planning and fiscal management tool used to coordinate location. So simply put, it is a community planning and fiscal management tool used to coordinate location and timing of your capital improvement projects over the next five years. The city has requested through the RFP uh the list of services, the scope that you see there on the left side of your screen. So asset assessment, prioritization, financial planning, risk mitigation and plan development and documentation. Our approach at Site Logic is first to identify your vision and objectives for your assets and provide clear assessment guidelines. Uh we are here to help you understand how your assets are functioning and identify cost expectations to address any concerns. All of this information will be summarized in a report and throughout this entire process, we will have an ongoing conversation with the mayor's office, uh City Council, Budget and Finance Department, who will always have the opportunity to provide feedback on our findings through regular updates. Next slide. So what is considered an asset in the capital improvement plan? The term asset is used to describe not just a building or location, but all of the components that make up the building or location. So examples would be things like roofs, windows, doors, flooring, air conditioning and heating systems, safety and security features, playground equipment, ADA accessibility. The city assets are made up of a variety of different types and you can see the different types on the left-hand side of your screen. And these will be included in the plan. Things like city park facilities and equipment, government office buildings, public safety buildings, maintenance and operation facilities, and assets designated as special use, which we would consider Broad Street Market, Civil War Museum and site features at City Island. Each asset is then provided with a rating, which is highlighted on the right. Acceptable, caution, alert, alarm, and danger. Think of this like a traffic signal. Anything green, you're good to go. Yellow, it's functioning, but there's some maintenance concern. And red predictably means it's failing or has failed and a replacement is recommended. Next slide. So how long will this assessment take? Here, we're showing a milestone schedule. The first three months, Site Logic will have boots on the ground, physically documenting, documenting what we see. The next three months involve prioritization and identifying cost expectations. And in the fall, we will provide a draft of the plan to be presented. You can see that we have some periodic updates uh provided uh where we provide our findings to you. Okay? Jeff Harris will now explain how we will build your plan. Thanks.
Thanks, Melissa. So as we uh work through your assessment, uh we start to gather all the data and the end of the whole process is, is a report. Now, I'm, I'm sure many of you have seen reports that come out of people like us who are engineers and architects. Some of them are very, very boring and we can give you one of those if you want one. And we prefer to give you something in a digital format and the way we structure our reports is leading to uh what we will talk to you about in the next phase after we've done your initial assessment, which we'll talk about in two slides. But inside our reports, we have a lot of dynamics, like not everyone in the, in the city has the ability to go out and, and look at all of the assets, all the buildings, all the parks, all the, all of the uh uh resources you have available. So you'll see, for instance, you'll see a floor plan in our report. You'll be able to click on a room inside a building, like this one, for instance. And you can go in and you'll see a, a, a camera survey that'll put you in the room and you can swing the camera around right in the, right from the digital uh, digital report and look all around the room, up and down at the ceilings, down at the floors. We do that for all your buildings. So you have access to that inside the report. So if somebody has a question, what, you know, what's going on in this particular building uh on the second floor, on the south side? They're telling me, you know, what does it look like now, uh before? We had the roof leak last week. You can check out some of those things. We, we photograph al- almost everything that we're doing in a, an analysis of and we put it in the report, so it's structured again, so you can see it inside the report. You don't have to go and, and visit it. Um along with uh, uh depending on the type of building it is, we'll also incorporate drone studies. Uh we've uh pretty much spearheaded uh advanced drone technology for doing roof surveys, for, for looking at uh locations that have a lot of acreage, like parks, uh those types of things, or for assets that it's difficult to see the scope of what you're looking at from the ground. So we'll, we'll do a lot of drone analysis to make sure that uh that happens as well. Uh next slide, please. Also, one of the things that we do, any of your assets that utilize, that consume um utilities, that's ener- uh electricity, water. Um we will uh torture your uh, your, your staff about getting us all the information you have available on your buildings. And we do a very deep dive in how you're using water, how you're using electricity. We will study it. Uh we will do benchmark analysis against other cities like Harrisburg, both uh in Pennsylvania. We'll look at it nationally. Uh we also go a step further, if, if it's warranted, that a couple of facilities are really having problems in areas like humidity. Uh we will deploy data loggers and take a look at where those uh, uh problems are, are occurring so that we can narrow our focus on recommendations for cleaning up the assets that might be not working that correct, that correctly to identify how to clean those up for your uh future planning. When we get to the tail end, and like I said, we'll deliver this re- uh first phase of the report. And what we want to talk to you about uh at the end of that, uh that phase is we can take all of this data we've gathered and we can migrate that to a cloud-based service. Next slide, please, Andrew. Uh cloud, cloud-based service we offer called MySiteIQ. We, we'll talk about it after we give you the first phase deliverable. And what that'll do is port all that data onto a platform that gives you very, very real-time, dynamic access to all of the assets that we've surveyed. Um and it's something that I think you'll find very exciting uh to get yourself into uh long-term because it, it makes the uh ability to plan year to year very, very easy, very easily accessible. And what's really slick about it is you can maneuver and manipulate where, how you want to do projects across time very easily. You don't have to reinvent the wheel. Every year, you come back to talk about how you want to do next, next three years, next five years. Stuff that you wanted to do in year four, you might find out, ah, some of these things I need to move back up to year one. Very easy to do live and in real time in, in, in that platform, which we'll get into uh at the end of our, our delivery for your first phase. That's all I have. I think I want to turn the last bit over to our boss and.
Uh thanks, Jeff, and thank you to uh City Council members for the opportunity for us to demonstrate our expertise here and, and assist the city in this evaluation, this necessary evalu- evaluation you want to go through now. Uh we're very proud, as Andrew said, of our thirty years of uh doing business in the City of Harrisburg. I've, I've been there with the company since the beginning. Uh you know, back in, actually as far as nineteen ninety-two, uh doing work here. Uh we have a tremendous amount of investment in the city and, and we're very proud to be here, uh you know, in front of the City Council, demonstrating our expertise and, and looking to do some more work with the city. Uh with that, I'd like to just open it up for any questions.
Thank you very much for your attendance and for your presentation this evening. I just wanted to review, the fee is forty thousand dollars. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And thank you also for providing the timeline. That's a general question uh that we ask. So thank you for that, including the two periodic updates. I don't have any other questions. I'll open the floor to my colleagues who may have additional questions. I'll begin with Vice President Green. Do you have any questions?
Uh good evening. Thank you for being here tonight. Uh thank you for being here, even though you were supposed to be here last week and because of the weather, you uh, you know, we canceled our meeting, so thank you for accommodating that. Um the presentation was wonderful. Uh thank you for shortening it. I heard it was a lot longer to the finance department. So thank you for shortening that um down some. Uh I will say, looking over the information you provided, um I'm excited to see some of the reports that will come out of it. Um kind of looking at, you know, as a whole, what are our yellow projects, right? The ones that are cautious. What are the red ones? Hopefully, it's not too many. Um you know, but that way we kind of can have that concise look at, you know, overarching. We're talking about ten thousand, a hundred thousand in projects that need to be done immediately so that we can plan for that. Um I know what working with the finance department is something we've been pushing for, kind of that future planning to make sure we don't find ourselves in the same situations we have before, where it's like it needs to be done now and every day the cost is continuing to go up. So um I look forward to that. I will uh ask about the MySiteIQ. That sounds like a, a recurring legacy cost if we would decide to go with it. So what is that fee structure? Or is that something we haven't gotten to yet? But I, I would suppose that you have like a standard fee structure that you charge for the, the MySiteIQ, because I think that's something that um might be needed afterwards. So just kind of wondering what the cost is.
Okay, so yes, um we did provide um a fee for um the use of that tool beyond um a one-year period upon the delivery of the report. Um and that fee was, I believe, I, I don't have the exact number in front of me. I apologize. Um I can provide that. It wa- it was around nine thousand dollars.
Annually?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And so it's, it's included for one year with this contract and then past that one year?
Yes, and that, and what that, so just to be clear about what that includes, it would include sort of the upkeep of the tool, right? From a, from a hosting standpoint, we had uh conversations about, you know, on the technical side about how that would work. Um it's your information. Um it, it's, you know, it's not ours. Um the tool is proprietary, the tool is ours, but the information that it presents to you is your information and it always will be. Um and, and that's important that I think City Council understands that.
Right. Essentially, we're paying for the software to manage it. So the information's ours, but to make it move easily is yours.
It provides the, the access to our team to, to help advise. Um you know, a- as I mentioned earlier, is it, um we were all sitting back there listening to the conversation about procurement. Um this is a conversation we have every day with clients across the state, you know, as somebody who does business with public agencies. So um we serve in a variety of roles with, with public agencies across the state. Um and so as a part of that, we're able to advise them on different procurement strategies, different mechanisms um to help support their ultimate goals.
Okay. I don't have too many more questions because I feel like that is getting into uh something in the future.
I apologize.
Um not so much uh as of right now. But I will say, looking at the information provided, I'm, I'm loving the technology. I really look forward to, to seeing this come to fruition because the city needs it. So thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilwoman Davis, any questions?
No, I don't have any questions at this time. Thank you. I look forward, though, to receiving more information as time goes on.
Thank you. Councilwoman Daniels, any questions?
Yeah, so after that initial year, um will the updates be made by our staff or does that nine thousand dollars include your staff continuing to do?
Yeah, it's a combined effort, you know, between um, you know, the, the budget and finance team uh from a planning perspective and then our, our team um updating it on the backend.
And then in terms of the assets that you're assessing, um are you assessing only the assets that the, I imagine someone on this, on the city side will be providing you? Or will you be looking for assets that the city might have that aren't necessarily handed over to, identified to you right away?
Yeah, I think as a part of our initial kickoff meeting with the city, um it's really important for us to, as Melissa mentioned, identify um and prioritize what they, what needs to be assessed or what the city would like to be assessed first. Um we were, as a, a part of the RFP, we were provided a listing of city assets, um which is how we were able to sort of categorize, um begun the process of categorizing them by use or type. Um and so we certainly would start there, but um it's, it, that, that's going to be the initial focus as far as we understand it.
Okay, and then will you be assessing on, kind of on the, on the negative side, like liabilities as well? Or just uh current condition and repair recommendations?
Liabilities assessed as a rule by a third party.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
That's what we have insurance folks for, to do that.
Okay, okay. Um I think that's uh, I, you know, at, at the price point, I'm, you know, I'm hopeful that you'll pr- provide a good product. The one area that I would ask you to consider as you're making assessments is that the city does have a lot of assets that are kind of hidden assets or like unknown assets, like we have like streets, random streets here and like little corners of land here and there that are just, you know, they'll pop up when we have to do a land development project or something. Um but in the meantime, potentially those are uh liabilities that we could get rid of um or could be opportunities that we could um expand on. So if you have the ability to take advantage of that or help us get a sense of where we are with that, that would be great. That would be valuable. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ross, any questions?
Thank you. I, I probably have a lot of questions and most of them probably aren't to your company because I do think that you would definitely lay out a very comprehensive plan of what we need to do as a city. And it's going to look beautiful on paper, but is, it's, for me, are we going to implement it? And I think that's sometimes where we get stopped at, because we have a five-year comprehensive plan that, that barely gets implemented. So I think my question would probably be for administrative, administration with you um director, um Ms. Marita, I'm sorry. How will we, say we say yes to this, we get their comprehensive plan of what we need to do? How do we, or how do you sit down with your team um during budget season and get the directors' budgets of what they're asking for and match it up and say, okay, this five-year plan said this is what we need to do? Do the directors have this within their budget? Are they asking for the things that they say that we need to do as a city so we stay on budget? Or so that then, you know, two years down the road, the havoc system isn't broke down where they already said it's in the danger zone? And that's just an example. I'm not saying that's what's going to happen, but they outline, this is what we need to do and then we don't do it. You don't see in the director's budget, but then you don't call it. So I guess my question would just be, how will you sit down with this plan if you had it with the directors to make sure the budgets are being lined up and the money is being spent correctly?
Those are excellent questions. Um I don't know that I can answer them all immediately, but I will say that this is probably the first time that the city's had anything quite this comprehensive. And every other city on the east coast has, has had a plan like this. So this is a good, a serious a- adventure for us. Now, it is a five-year plan, which I really hope will maybe bleed into a seven-year plan because we cannot um complete and improve every single asset that we will own. Obviously, we'll prioritize those items that they spoke about. But I will say that this tool that they're giving us, we, we, we interviewed a half a dozen companies. And at the, the final interviews, two of the companies beside this company were asking us questions about their product. So, so the thing is, these guys brought the product to us. We think it's a valuable product. It is nine thousand dollars a year if we are to con- um to, to continue it. But we would be spending that anyway on other planning. And this is real active planning where we're going to have a five to seven-year plan where we'll know if um this particular facility needs to be um replaced immediately or maybe in year three. So then they will help us establish what the funding mechanisms would be, although, as you know, we're, we're restricted because we can't borrow at the moment. But that doesn't mean they can't help us with grant opportunities or grant uh recommendations. They can't help us with, you know, if, if and when you can borrow, this is how you'd pay for it, that type of thing. So I think they're bringing forth to, to this council a, a, a product and a valued document that is going to add value and keep the value of the assets that you do own at the level they need to be, safe and healthy for the citizens of this community. So I mean, for instance, when they, when they look at this particular room, they're going to look at the air quality. They're going to look at the, the oxygen level. They're going to look at the temperature. They're going, I mean, I can't even, I, I mean, I'm a, you know, I'm a neophyte when it comes to their product. I mean, what they can do just to tell you about this room. So I'm hoping um that you'll be pleased because we did do our due diligence as a um Department of Budget and Finance. We did interview. We did go through, through the appropriate mechanisms. And we think we found not only a great company, but a great company that's has and continues to reside in the City of Harrisburg and has invested in the city.
Yeah. No, I agree. I think you did find a great company. I think they're very well-versed. They understand what they're doing. They understand what they're doing and like I said, they're going to come up with a beautiful plan. My scare is will we use it? And like I said, will we match it up and will you match it up as our director of budget and finance with what the directors asked? Because and if not, this is pointless. That's my thing.
Well, the whole point is for it to, to, as, as our budget and finance director will tell you, is that we have been managing the capital budgets, but not in a very sophisticated way. We have a list, a very long list which we gave them, but that's it. So now we not only have the list, but we have the status of that asset. And now we can determine with the department directors, like my colleague behind me, who has the most departments and has the most investments. I'm relying on he and, and the city engineer to say, this is what we need for 2025. This is what we'll need for 2026. So I do think it's a living, breathing document and this tool allows us to continue to live and breathe and become a better city in the management of our fixed assets.
Right.
Not only that, as you remember, what the IT director said a few minutes ago, that we are also on March 1st implementing the capital asset module. So these two dovetail exactly the same time. They'll start on March 1st. We have the capital asset module and Munis on March 1st. So we hope through the guidance of our excellent um chair that she's given me directions and I hope I've followed through with the direction she's given me. And we do believe this is a living, breathing tool that should um go a long way in helping individuals like Mr. West and, and, and the other department directors help direct us towards what their needs are and how we can best invest in the city.
Okay.
I want to comment to that because you, you brought up grant. We do have in-house grant writing capabilities as well as in-house lobbyists and external lobbyist support for those grants and we don't charge extra for that.
Okay. Well, thank you for adding that. That's great to know. Thank you very much. Okay. That was it. That was my only question. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Rodriguez, any questions?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, thank you all for joining us this evening. Um, Mr. Harris, uh, you had mentioned things such as like leaks in buildings, et cetera. Let's say you do identify a leak in one of our assets. How does that get taken care of? Would that be through our engineering? Do we third-party that? How does that get taken care of in the long run?
Any, any active problem like that, we would notify immediately whoever the responsible department is so that it could be addressed. We would note it depending on, on the type of leak, a, as an example, plumbing piping leak in a gang toilet room has to be addressed right then and there.
So like for instance, there's a really bad one at the Civil War Museum right in the Mid-Order Rotunda.
Yeah, yeah. So, so we would, we, we would know some, notify you immediately that it needs to be taken care of. And if it was the type of thing that you, you couldn't address it, we have people we could bring in and get it addressed if it was, if it was that serious.
That, that was something I wanted to.
Oh, yeah. We, we have access. If, if you said, I can't handle it, can you take care of it? We would do it.
So for additional fee, you guys.
Correct. That's correct. But we would not, we would not sit on it if you couldn't take care of it. And we noticed it, we would take care of it. There's no question about it.
Okay. So I guess so Solicitor Grover, initially before we get to that route, would our own engineer be able to handle majority of the work?
Well, our engineer does more road work than facilities work.
I'm sorry. Thought I turned it on. Our engineer does more uh road work, bridge work than facilities work. We, we do a lot of the outsourcing of, of engineering facilities. For example, we're, the city is very well aware of the Civil War Museum's leak. It's been an issue for quite a while. Um, there has been disagreement about the cost of it and whose liability it is. Um, and uh the study that was done years ago, like thousands and thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars were studied to tell, say that it was a leak, which is not really how the city would have approached it frankly. Um, the, so the answer is that would go out most likely for a public construction bid and then it would go into this very difficult priority list. I mean, I would look, this, we're talking about facilities. We're not talking about roads, bridges, dams, or the other things that we have here. Um, and all of those things go into that budget priority list. Which do you fix? Which do you fix first? Which do you finance if you can finance? Which do you get grants for? I mean, you, you know this, you're the council. You have to approve all of these.
Yeah, yeah. These are clarifications not for me for residents. I'm aware.
Right. I'm just saying, those are the difficult challenges. This will help clarify some of those difficult challenges.
You understand to a resident, they wouldn't have a clue. They want those specifics.
Right, right. And so, so that, those are, those are, those are very painful decisions that eventually have to get made by the administration as they go on when they come down here and ask for, for money for one thing instead of another.
Awesome. Thank you. Um, and then moving forward, after the first year goes on, um, if we pay the nine thousand dollars for the software to continue, what does that training process look for the financing budgeting team? How will they get acclimated? Who does the acclimation?
I can answer that question. Uh, we provide that in-house training to designated members of the departments that would require access. Uh, training is very simple and straightforward and it's usually a day and we would provide lunch. Uh, we provide a lot of questions. It's a Q and A for us. Uh, so we're happy to provide that. As far as the updates of the software, you know, what does that mean? It's not just taking the projects that you put in place in 2024 and, you know, kind of move them um up or down. It's really going into your facilities and if you change the flooring, the lighting, the ceiling, we would document that with a photograph and then we would provide that update. So now you have a historical record of the projects that you've put in place. Now you get to see the progress that uh you have available to you. It's, you know, created to serve as a single resource for you. Um, and um, you know, hopefully this will help, you know, encompass a lot of the uh questions that you have or, you know, provide answers to some questions about your facilities.
Thank you. Director Cole Stock, while we're on you, I'll just stay right here with you. Um, as Director of Deliverables, I'm looking through the improvement plan milestone schedule.
Yes.
The only thing I'm struggling with seeing is community engagement. Do we intend to have a lot of that, uh, neighborhood by neighborhood? Or what does that look like from you guys actually coming in and engaging that? Because that's a huge portion of like the decisions being made. It's based off of community engagement, what the residents feel need as well.
Sure. Uh, community engagement is we follow the lead for uh however you would like us to engage with the community. We do it regularly. It's almost a regular occurrence with every single school district that we work with. So we're very familiar with that process. I think for us, it just kind of depends on the type of asset uh that we're looking at. Uh, and that actually speaks a little bit more to the prioritization piece that we would get into. So uh as you're ready and willing to have those types of conversations, that's where we start to introduce the community engagement around those assets.
Awesome. And um, I guess Director Kelly, do you feel you would have, let's say the complement to adjust? Because I know there could be some quite struggles from time to time. Um, but if it's something we want to continue with, do you think your department would need to hire or it's something you can withstand and take care of as is?
You mean the community engagement piece?
No, no. I mean your department taking care of it after the initial year and then we say, hey, yeah, for nine grand, we can continue. I believe um the gentleman had said your department would be the department to lead that as well with them. So are you able to handle that with your current complement?
I believe so. And we are adding one more person, a, a financial analyst. There was a job offer today and we hope to have them onboard. But the nice thing is that they're not going away. They're going to help complement our efforts. They're going to help guide us to the, to the degree until we get to December 31st of 2024. And then as we go into the new year, we will work as a team to continue the um enormous task of getting all the assets, which include bridges and, and roads. Um, but uh obviously our beginning um efforts will be with facilities and particularly immediate facilities that we see challenges with.
The upkeep also will be um the burden center on your department as well. That's the only reason why I asked.
That's correct.
Okay, awesome.
Although we'll be working very closely with our colleagues because um my team is going to include Public Works, Engineering, Facilities. So we um haven't fully um vetted our team efforts yet because we're waiting for this contract to become solid, which hopefully will happen in the next, you know.
So you're going to create a team for this?
That's correct.
Okay. Because you hadn't mentioned budget and finance. So that's why.
Yeah. It's not solely us, but we're going to be kind of the, the captains guiding the ship. And then, but we can't guide any ship if there isn't good guidance from the wonderful directors that the city has. And as you know, they, they have, we have such great talent. I'm just looking forward to working with everyone.
Absolutely. Did you have something to add?
No, uh, Ms. Kelly actually addressed it. I just wanted to make sure I'd, I'd misspoke when I said it's just solely budget and finance. It's, it, it's going to take a village um and it's going to take a, a, a unique amount of effort from not just budget and finance, but Public Works, uh, the city, city engineer's office to, in order for this to be, you know, a, a truly usable product for you.
Absolutely. And then um representing a community that's majority, uh, black and brown community, would, would, are you aware of your diversity complement within the organization by chance?
I'm not off the top of my head, but I will, I can follow up and provide that.
If you can get that, that would be incredible. Thank you.
Yes.
No further questions, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilman Jones, any questions?
Uh, yes. I have a Snickers. No. First of all, I want to uh thank you guys and I, I had time to actually read your, your uh presentation in its entirety. Um, I had a little time away and dove into this, but I really like it and, and, and I am very impressed of what you guys are offering um our city. It is deeply needed. But my first question I will start out with, and maybe this is a question for Mr. Grover. Um, what is the difference between SiteLogIQ and the ICA? Because they seem, seem to have like a five-year plan or something. So just give me some clarity on what the difference is between the two, please.
The difference for, the ICA is a authority.
Yes.
And it's actually the city provides them with a five-year financial plan with projections on revenues, incomes, potential expenditures. So um, and, and I think Marita could speak to this because her office is tasked with drafting that plan again and again and again uh every year. But that is, I think, different than, this is more of a plan on, on what the priorities are with the many capital needs the city has, which I mean, they really are two different things. I think this will inform that plan going forward.
I was going to say, they seem to coincide. That's what I just wanted to find, the dividing line between the two.
I don't think this plan is going to project revenue and sources of income to pay it. So I think that's sort of the difference of the two. I think ICA is supposed to see, hey, are you guys on a fiscally sound platform?
Mm-hmm.
This is prioritizing what you can do with the platform you have.
Okay. So now with, with that being said, I just needed a little clarification on that because um what I was reading and, and Ms. Kelly, uh, I'm glad that you brought up, you know, uh, the borrowing for the city because a lot of people are under the impression that we are safe, you know, that we're completely out of the, the hot water. And I'm glad that you brought that up. But I think that this plan, I think, what, what you guys are offering can give us that vision to see some, some potential in our city with the few assets that we do have. Uh, and, and see, I'm just anxious to see some of these reports, to see uh what we can do moving forward to help our city grow because we definitely need to start bringing revenue into our city. Um, I think that's something that's very important for our residents. It will help in so many areas. Um, I think it will help with bringing down uh crime and all of those things uh just by bringing uh opportunity to our city. So um, I don't have any further questions, but um I really like what you guys have to offer. You know, uh, I took my time reading it and you, 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 I know you had to shorten it with your, uh, the profiles. I've seen your whole team. It's a big team that you guys have, but I'm very impressed.
I did want to provide one point of clarification, if I may, that the um, the capital improvement portion of the Intergovernmental Cooperation of Five-Year Report that I, I and my staff produce is one chapter in the long chapter of the 120-page report. And it's actually the chapter in the back and it, we do list all assets, but we basically say, well, we can't afford to pay for these. So this way they'll be able to say, if you could, here's what it costs. Here's how you manage it. This is how you prioritize it. And I can guarantee you that the Intergovernmental Cooperation Authority, the ICA, will be thrilled to have this added piece. But also, we are also in a secondary um, um, o- oversight board with the Department of Community and Economic Development. We have a Act 47 Recovery Coordinator, Madhur Klaes. So we'll be providing that to DCD as well. So I think both oversight boards will be thrilled to see this additional piece of leadership that we're showing and that, that we're able to add value to what our assets are and how we can continue those, particularly as we tie it into the Munis um system. So I think it's hopefully a win-win. Uh, we were a little sad to see this delayed as far as we did, but maybe it's a blessing in disguise because March 1st is coming up and the two will dovetail perfectly, the Munis uh capital asset and then the reporting and so forth. So we're hoping it's a win-win and we're hoping that all the department directors agree with us as we move forward with the proposal.
Yes. Uh, again, I just, my, my question for you, Neil, was just basically, it's nothing that you, you really need to respond to. It's just a, a statement that's saying that uh, you know, for the community to understand some of these things, and they probably didn't even know what the ICA was, but um for me, I understood the difference between the two, but just to report out for the community's understanding. And I think these two will coincide uh perfectly together to, to say, uh, to say the less. But thank you. I have no more questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks Travis.
I moved to add Resolution 5 of 2024 to our legislative session agenda for a vote. Sure. Resolution 6 of 2024. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes. Resolution 6 of 2024. A resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Halcyon Interpreting Services LLC to provide sign language interpreting services.
Thank you. Uh, just to reiterate, this was a request of councils. Again, um, we are seeking to enter into another one-year agreement with Halcyon Interpreting Services LLC, uh, which we have done since 2022. Um, there are no real changes to the agreement. Uh, Solicitor Grover, am I missing anything?
It has been a while since we've looked at this, but I believe the price has gone up a little bit, but not a lot.
Okay. I'll open the floor uh to my colleagues for questions. Councilwoman Daniels, any questions?
Um, no. So like based on our usage last year, is this like enough?
You're, you did not come close to using up your appropriation last year.
Okay. So do you mind me asking like how, like how come we don't have interpreters for today's meeting?
We do. This is just the work session portion, so they will participate in the legislative session.
Okay, so we're, we don't, why did I not, okay, so we don't have them for the work sessions?
No, just for the legislative sessions.
Is that something we should probably look at? Because I feel like the work sessions is where the bulk of the.
So initially, when we were looking at.
Go ahead.
Oh, no, that's okay. Initially, when we were um, I guess, looking at uh becoming more um inclusive, we, the request was work sessions and legislative sessions. When they were attending both, that's when we ate up our budget. So that's why we decided um to move forward with legislative sessions.
Do you have a sense of what it would have been if we, if we fund the whole, like what's the difference in cost between fully funding and just funding? Because it sounds like we underuse if we just do one and then we overuse if we do both?
I, I would say the council could always run that calculation and make its determination if the year went on, if it wanted to appropriate addition of funds. But I think that, you know, I, what was requested right now for this year's budget was for legislative sessions.
And for this amount.
And, and in 2022, if I remember correctly, you just ate that budget up a couple months into the year when they were doing all meetings. And that year, if you remember, you had many budget meetings in the beginning?
Yes, that's what.
And, and it just ate the entire budget very quickly.
Okay. That's it for me.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Davis, any questions?
No, no questions. Thank you, President Bowers.
You're welcome. Vice President Green, any questions?
I have any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Rawls, any questions?
No, I don't have any. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Rodriguez, any questions?
Thank you, Madam President. No questions from me.
Okay, and Councilman Jones?
No questions.
All right, thank you. So this concludes the work of the Administration Committee. Just two other notes regarding our agenda. The quarterly report for the Department of Building and Housing Development and the quarterly report for the Bureau of Economic Development will also move to our February 27th meeting agenda. will also move to our February 27th meeting agenda. Next, we have Budget and Finance. I will defer to our Budget and Finance Committee Chair, Vice President Green.
Thank you, President Bowers. The Budget and Finance Committee will be looking at Resolution 3 of 2024. Mr. Parker, would you read it into record, please?
Yes. Resolution 3 of 2024. A resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a collection agreement with the Harrisburg School District for the collection of the business privilege and mercantile tax and the amusement tax for the 2024 tax year.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the city to speak to Resolution 3 of 2024? Thank you, Mr. Hughes. If you wouldn't mind introducing yourself and then just going over a basic overview.
Good evening, City Council Mike Hughes, Tax Administrator, City of Harrisburg. Resolution 3, 2024, similar to the resolutions we've been interested in every year for about the past 20. We've been collecting the business privilege mercantile tax and amusement tax for the school district in conjunction with the tax we collect for the city. We do receive a percentage to collect that for them. Like I said, we've been doing this for over 20 years for them, so.
Thank you very much. And are there any changes from this year or years past?
We just updated the year pretty much on this one.
All right. Thank you. I don't have any questions. It's pretty clear-cut. It's kind of repetitive. I'll open it up to my colleagues for any questions. I'll start to my far left with Councilman Jones.
Yes. A simple question. You, we are. No, I apologize. This isn't a resolution. I have no questions for this one. I apologize.
Thank you very much. Councilman Rodriguez, any questions?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. No questions for me.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Rawls.
Thank you, Vice President Green. Thank you for being here tonight. I don't have any questions.
Thank you, President Bowers. Any questions?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Davis, any questions?
No, Councilwoman Green, I don't have any questions. Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Sounds pretty clear-cut to me. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Daniels, any questions?
I don't have a question that's particular to this bill, but I think it would be good if the city solicitor could address whether Ms. Green should be continuing, what the limitations or confines are of her ability to oversee budgetary, budget-related bills.
I'm unaware of any.
Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
I would simply note there was one clarification in the, in paragraph 1.7 that clarified the responsibilities of the Tax Office versus the City Treasurer based on a dispute that was ongoing, just for the clarity, that the Tax Office has the ability to collect the returns and the money, and then they transmitted according to the city code to the Treasurer's office.
Thank you very much. I will recommend this move to our next legislative agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. I failed to move Resolution 6 of 2024 to our legislative session agenda for a vote. We will now move to the Building and Housing Committee. I will defer to our Building and Housing Committee Chair, Councilwoman Davis.
Thank you, President Bowers. Okay, so the quarterly report for the Department of Building and Housing Development, again, is going to be moved to the, till next week, February 27th meeting. Resolution 4-2024. Could you read it into the record, Mr. Parker?
Certainly. Resolution 4 of 2024. A resolution appointing Mr. James Hobbs to serve on the zoning hearing board of the City of Harrisburg.
Thank you. We do have Mr. Hobbs here today. Can you make sure that?
It's on.
Okay, thank you. Can you just give us a little bit of information about your background and what you are doing now on the board and what you're hoping to accomplish in the future?
Yes. So I've been a resident of the city since 2016. In terms of my employment, I currently work as a manager, cybersecurity engineer for Ernst &amp; Young, also known as EY. Apart from that, I do a lot of real estate as an investor, a Realtor. I teach real estate investing classes as an affiliate of the Jump Start Program that was originated in Philadelphia, and also working on additional programming and content around that. I have served on a number of boards here in the area for nonprofit organizations and also volunteered for other organization, community organizations as well to include mentoring and coaching programs. And have been serving on the zoning board since 2022, initially as an alternate, and now, of course, being proposed to be a full member.
Thank you. I'd like to open this up for questions from my colleagues. So I will start to my right with Councilwoman Daniels. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, just, can you, do you see any potential areas of conflicts of interest between your current activities and your role on the board?
Not particularly. I think there's always a chance that I might have to recuse myself depending on where property lies in, I guess, proximity to where I live. But apart from that, no general conflicts of interest.
That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Green?
Thank you very much. I don't have any questions. Thank you. Thank you for your willingness to serve.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Bowers, President Bowers.
Thank you. I don't have any questions. Thank you for your service to the board already. I know that you were a very active alternate, so thank you. Look forward to your continued service as a full board member.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rawls, do you have any questions?
Thank you very much. No, I don't have any questions. Just, again, thank you for your service so far on, on the board. We appreciate it and wanting to continue to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Rodriguez, any questions?
Thank you, Chair Davis. Very familiar with Mr. Hobbs. Thank you for your willingness to serve in his capacity. I didn't know about some of the background stuff with the trainings and workshops, so before you leave, I'd love to exchange information and see how we can implement that with some students. But, you know, I look forward to supporting and look forward to seeing the things you do ahead. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Jones, any questions?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Hobbs, for, you know, your willingness to serve. I'm not too familiar with you, so I heard you mention that you came into Harrisburg City in 2016. Where were you prior?
I lived in Enola for five years prior to that.
Okay. And what was your interest? Why are you interested in being on the zoning hearing board?
So I generally have an interest in anything related to community and serving, specifically here, of course, within the city. But I think there's a lot of overlap in terms of my interest in real estate and housing that turned from just being an investor to looking at it more from a community development level and just understanding that there's a lot of, I think, deficiencies in a way, but also understanding that I think there's a lot of things that need to be refactored over time to make sure that they're relevant and overall that they're really serving the residents of the city, which things that, you know, I've even noticed since being on the zoning board the last couple of years. So that really is the baseline of my interest.
Okay. Yeah, I would like to have a conversation with you two off the record. So, yeah, thanks for coming out and your willingness to serve.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hobbs. I don't have any other questions. Thank you. That's the end of my report.
Thank you.
And just for one point, just for the record, Mr. Hobbs' alternate term would have expired this December, and Mr. Pianca, who's replacing, does as well. So I expect if he's still willing, he will be back here later in the year to talk about next year, so.
Thank you.
Say that again about Pianca?
He is replacing the outgoing member, who was, their staggered terms.
Mr. Hobbs is?
Yeah, and so, so he's filling out the remainder of that term.
Got you.
And so, so that term will expire this December 31st, and so there'll be a need for a nomination for the next three-year term.
Thank you. Thank you.
If I, if I may, Councilwoman Daniels, Resolution 4 will be, you're moving that to be up for a vote at our next legislative session?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Thank you. Next, we have the Community and Economic Development Committee. I will defer to our Community and Economic Development Committee Chair, Councilwoman Daniels.
Okay, thank you. The two items of business are quarterly reports for the Bureau of Planning and the Bureau of Economic Development. Mr. Naid, if you don't mind, starting out with the Bureau of Planning report.
All right. Good, good evening, council. First time before you all this year. And it's my first time before Councilwoman Davis and Councilman Jones. Councilman Jones, I got to meet you last week to speak a little bit informally at City Council, City Council Office. And Councilwoman Davis, I look forward to meeting with you and speaking with you about what the Planning Bureau does here in the city. So with that being said, up on the screen before you is a bit of the department description. It's generally from the 2024 budget document, but it's been modified a little bit. So you see, the Planning Bureau deals with development, economic development, community development, housing, a lot of physical development projects here in the city, both through our land development plan process in which projects go before both the Planning Commission and then come before City Council, and through our zoning review process, in which case they go before our Planning Commission and our zoning hearing board. And the documents that guide our reviews of those projects are the city's comprehensive plan adopted by City Council in November of 2021, the current zoning code, and our subdivision and land development ordinance. In addition to kind of these corresponsibilities of short and long-term planning, we also are the primary point of contact for historic preservation issues here in the city, floodplain management, and assistance in the preparation of maps and other documents and things like that. We often get a lot of inquiries from Realtors, for example, for letters of plan consistency or zoning verification letters, things of that nature. We do staff three citizen land use boards, the Harrisburg Planning Commission, zoning hearing board, of which Mr. Hobbs is going to be a member, full member surely here, and the Architectural Review Board. In addition to those monthly meetings that we staff and prepare for, we handle calls, emails, walk-ins on a daily and weekly basis on a variety of issues. And so, really, a lot of what the Planning Bureau does is, you know, kind of everything from A to Z. As I said, we could be writing plan consistency letters, serving on a park master plan review committee, and then having a meeting with Rabbit Transit about their, you know, operations or their new headquarters project, all within the course of a single day. So it's really addressing a lot of topics within our department. And then there, at the final bullet point there, you can see the most significant project is our comprehensive plan. That, again, was a couple of years ago. And then about the same timeframe, we also updated the historic district design and preservation guidelines. Our zoning code is a little bit older. It was adopted in July of 2014. So we're about 10 years on from that. And as I'll note in following slides, one of our goals for this upcoming year is to potentially bring some new amendment packages before City Council to address some of, you know, maybe aspects of the zoning code that are outdated or to maybe respond to some of the trends we've been seeing in the kind of zonion land use throughout the city of Harrisburg here. So getting back to our fourth quarter of 2023, summary, summary. As you can see, the fourth quarter is generally a bit slower for the Planning Bureau, obviously for the city overall, being that it's right around the holidays there, but also because we do not hold on our land use board meetings in December. So we only have two, we only have monthly meetings, two out of the three months there. And we did not have a meeting for HARB in October. Otherwise, we did have our meetings as regularly scheduled. We did, we did have a new deputy planning director start at the end of October. So we were able to fill a vacancy that existed for about a year. And he was getting on his feet, getting started. We had him through orientation, everything. He had managed the January Planning Commission and Zoning Hearing Board meetings. And then unfortunately, Mr. Breach had to resign at the beginning of this month, on February 2nd. So that position is open. During, during his time here, though, he was able to help us take some pretty significant steps towards meeting some of our larger goals, including development of GIS maps for our comprehensive plan story mapping webpage that we're gonna have. So that is going to be a basically visual tracking device of kind of baseline statistics for the city. And then as we go on, probably annual updates for maybe the number of building permits that have been submitted or the number of new housing units that we've had here in the city. Fortunately, as I think Mr. Bortner referenced earlier this evening, we have had a new GIS administrator start, Ms. Lewandowski, and she's been working with the Planning Bureau to kind of pick up where he left off. So we're still hoping to keep that relatively on schedule with a little bit of delays. Some other projects that we were working on and are continuing to work on here in the first quarter, updating our applications to provide more information and direction to the public upfront. So our permits, our applications, like our zoning relief applications, land development, are a little bit, a little bit older. And so we're updating them to kind of not only incorporate new requirements for things like public notice and recommendations on things like community engagement before coming to these boards, but also to provide, outline a little bit more of the process and to provide a little bit more direction, kind of hoping to address some of the inquiries that we end up getting throughout the process on the front end so that they have that document with them to refer to for their own benefit and for their own scheduling needs. Working on researching CRS communities throughout the country. So CRS is Community Rating Systems, or Community Rating System? Yeah, sorry. And that is a program through FEMA's National Flood Insurance Program, of which the city is a participating member. And you get points towards that rating for doing various projects or adopting regulations. And one of the long-term projects of the Urban Planner One in our department was to research the higher-ranking departments, everything from Level 1, of which there are very few. That's kind of the highest level to Level 5, and to identify some maybe low-hanging fruit that the city could go after so that we could be earning more points towards our rating and without having to reinvent the wheel to find out what other people are doing. So that's something that she recently completed. And the city's 2023 submission was filed on February 1st. So everything we do now going forward will be towards the February 1st, 2025 submission. But our goal is to spend this year, again, identifying some low-hanging fruit so that we can raise up through the rankings, which make owners of property in the floodplain eligible for discounts on their flood insurance. So it's definitely something that not only helps us as a community be more prepared overall to handle and respond to flood events, but it also has benefits that really accrue kind of throughout the city. And then finally, working with IT and various other departments like codes to, to kind of onboard and migrate a lot of what we do with the Planning Bureau to Munis, as you've heard from some of the other departments here. You know, the city, the Planning Bureau reviews building permits from the Codes Bureau if they're in the floodplain or historic district or require some sort of zoning review. And we also get mercantile permits from the Tax Enforcement Office. So it's really critical that, you know, we are not just doing our things in Munis within our own silo, but that we're working with these other departments to make sure that whatever they're doing is something that can really mesh with what we need on, on the front end. And so that's something that we've been working on, both myself and the Urban Planner One throughout the last few months. So here are five goals from the fourth quarter of 2023. As you can see there, filling the vacant positions that we've had, kind of checked one off, but had not filled the historic preservation special. but had not filled the historic preservation specialist position. So that's still vacant and still posted to the city's website. And I believe we use Indeed as far as a job search engine, developing the comprehensive plan document. So I kind of spoke to that a little bit before. Now with Ms. Lewandowski helping out, we're hoping to have kind of a beta version up probably by early spring. So, you know, populating that with some initial data and information and getting that storyboard up and running. And then that's something we'll probably work on refining over time. As I noted, zoning, doing zoning amendment packages to be reviewed by the Planning Commission and City Council. And that may be things as mundane as like kind of changing some of our signage regulations, maybe allowing certain larger signs on some of the districts. It may also be things that are a bit more critical to the kind of core of that document, like proposing recommendations for allowing different uses in different zoning districts. So that's something that I expect to be bringing to council this year. As I noted, addressing the city's current CRS rating, which is a level eight, hopefully being with just a few additional activities or additional types of programming that we can do, getting us up to a level seven, maybe even a level six, depending on what we're able to get to. And then finally, the improving the application documentation, including Spanish language translations of those documents. So with our year-to-date budget spend, the Planning Bureau's budget is generally pretty thin. Our budget is pretty much limited to our staffing. And as I noted, we've had a couple of vacancies, both in the fourth quarter of 2023 and then continuing into this year. And then funds that go towards our zoning hearing board meetings, and that is for our zoning hearing board solicitor, our zoning hearing board stenographer that attends those, because they're quasi-judicial meetings, and then the legal advertisements that we have to, that we have to place in the Patriot News every month to advertise the meetings. So it's a pretty minimal budget. Obviously, with the vacancies in the department, we have not been using that. We have not been using the funds for those, allocated for those, but we are generally on track with our zoning hearing board spends. So the Planning Bureau has not generally been working on a lot of grants. We definitely provide support for other grants, both for departments here in the city, but for other organizations, like, again, writing letters of plan consistency for Capital Region Water, for example, or maybe a loan compensing tax credit project that's going, that a developer is proposing. But one project that we did wrap up in the last quarter of 2023 was a historic adaptive reuse study of the 19th Street Armory. I'm not sure if everybody's aware of that. That's down there 19th. And I forget where the cross street is down there, but it's basically just before you cross over Spring Creek and get to, get to the incinerator. I think it's Caledonia Street there. But that's an old building that the city has and looking, but it's a historic building. So we were able to get a PHMC grant to look at both the condition of the building and then evaluate some potential, at least quasi-public uses of the property. That was a requirement of the, of the grant. So we were able to finalize that. We have that, we have that study, and we've been working with some of the other departments, like the Department of Public Works on possibly relocating a recycling center there or with the Police Department on possibly having a substation there or precinct station there. Other than that, you know, kind of here's some of our other projects. And I've kind of outlined most of those, along with our kind of some rough completion deadlines, which are all largely, you know, spring, late spring of this year or summer of this year. I think we're looking at the amendment packages probably being in mid-spring, or sorry, mid-summer when council is on hiatus. So we'd probably be bringing those to you in like August or our post-hiatus time period. And then here are the department vacancy updates. Again, Mr. Breach was here for about three months and then recently had to step down on February 2nd. So that position is open and posted, and our historic preservation position has been vacant since early 2022. Finally, as far as community engagement and interaction and communication, obviously with the vacancies we have, we've had a long, bit of a longer response time. I think we were doing really well in November and December into January with dealing with a lot of calls, emails, permit processing. That's slowed down a little bit, but, you know, staff is putting in extra hours here on weekends sometimes to make sure that we're trying to, you know, process things at the same rate with a lower capacity. Our improved community engagement through website design. So I had a meeting with IT today to discuss getting the new versions of our documents up online and maybe even changing the format of the webpage itself. Right now, it's, there's kind of more blank space than I'd like and maybe bringing some of the links for documents further up to the top of the page so that people don't have to scroll down as much, maybe finding ways to rearrange some of the information that's on there to address questions upfront so people aren't looking through the page to find information. You know, we're constantly working with other departments, like the Health Inspector on their Harrisburg Health Newsletter. That's Nova Reich. She's started putting that together last year. So that's something we're working to get a kind of zoning component of that because obviously, as noted, you know, we review the mercantile permits. So one thing, one big issue that we run into a lot is having people, you know, start signing leases with a property owner before they know if they're permitted to do that business there or not. And so that can really slow them up if they're doing something in a district that doesn't permit that by right and they have to go through the zoning relief process. Also, working with Jason Graves in the Economic Development Department on reviewing some of the plans and projects that he has going on and coordinating on some maybe tutorial videos to put up on the website. He and I have discussed that and what that looks like. And maybe that'll follow up with the kind of 10-question interviews that Mr. Maisel is doing with the Communications Department. And then, yep, that's pretty much working on those videos there at the end. So that's all that I have for my report for the Planning Bureau, and I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody may have.
So I'll just open up whoever made the request for this presentation, probably start to see if he did what you were expecting.
So it was at the request of all council members that we changed the structure of the quarterly reports. But I, I don't have any questions. Thank you for sharing.
I guess I'll go next, since I also requested for quarterly reports. They're very helpful to the public. Thank you. Thank you for being here today. My first question might actually go to Solicitor Grover, I'm not sure. But Mr. Breach, would we be able to know if he had an exit interview? Just to see maybe why he left, is anything we can improve as a city? Just helpful and for feedback.
We did communicate with HR. We don't discuss personnel, but it was communicated to our office. It was for a personal reason that was beyond the ability of anyone to resolve for the city.
That's fine. Thank you. Just for good feedback. My other question, or I don't know if it's more of a question or suggestion, but I loved how you said there were so many things that you were working on to improve your department and projects that you were looking into and also talking and looking at what other cities that are comparable to us are doing. So I was wondering, when it came to parking, I know that's still such a huge issue within our city for a lot of our residents. They've come to a few meetings. How are you, when you, like you said, you're going to be looking at the zoning codes and trying to update things. How will you look at parking in trying to update how to, in a way, just make it a little bit better for our residents, thinking about when developers are coming in to, for apartment buildings or business buildings and trying to think of creative ways to not create more of a parking strain, but lessen that? So I guess it's a two-part question. How are you going to update the zoning codes with it? But also, how are you going to think forward with when these businesses or developments come in for parking?
Yeah, well, you know, I think the issue of parking comes up in a lot of scenarios here that the Planning Bureau deals with. And it's something that, you know, kind of falls within both the Planning Bureau's purview, if you're doing parking on a site, and also the city engineer's purview, if that's on-street publicly accessible parking. And the, there's really no silver bullet, you know? I think in a lot of cases, it'd be really helpful to have a citywide parking study because, you know, certainly, there's probably capacity in some places and lack of capacity in other places. And, you know, you're also talking about, is there things we can do from a multimodal perspective? Can we talk to Rabbit Transit about possibly running more routes so that people don't have to get in their car for every trip, especially nights and weekends? Maybe finding ways to do shared parking systems? I know it's, one time there was Zip Car was kind of a thing where you'd have like a shared vehicle. You'd, everybody, the public could have access to, you could like rent it out. There are ones where you can, I forget what they're called, but you can like share your own vehicle if you're willing to do that, I guess. Kind of like an Airbnb for a car. And so I think, you know, it's, it's tough to say what the solution would be without having, I think, really a fuller understanding of what that situation looks like across the city. But, you know, it's definitely something we hear a lot and something that I, you know, definitely needs to be looked at as far as where do we have inefficiencies or inadequacies in our regulations? And what do those changes look like?
I agree with you, and I also agree with a parking study. Is that something that you would look into seeing? Is there any grants for one to happen here in the city? Or what a company would look like price-wise? I mean, I know you can't just go out and do bids, but I don't mean it in that way. But looking at seeing what that would look like for the city to get a parking study done? Would that be something you would be tasked with being able to look at so we can move forward? Because I think that would definitely be step one so that we can then see where the issue is and like you see where are some dense spots, non-dense spots and.
I mean, I think that'd probably be, my guess is that'd probably come out of more like the city engineers department because so much of the parking is like public right-of-way issues. And, you know, that's really where I think you're going to have really big gains is like, can we eliminate driveway curb cuts? You know, can we maybe do kind of design hydrants differently so that they're not mid-block or at the end of the block where you can't park anyway? You know, it could be little things like that, but I think a lot of that's public right-of-way. Something I'd certainly expect to engage with them on and be, you know, work closely with them on.
Okay, thank you so much. That was it for me.
Anyone else?
I would just note, the city does have a parking authority and a parking administrator. And prior citywide parking studies back in the day were done through the parking authority. So the last one was done prior to the transfer of the system back in 2013. There'd been a few of them. So although they don't have much to manage because of the transfer, they're still there. There's still a city authority, which, you know, might be a tool available that's, that could be used.
That's what I was going to ask next. Is there any way that if I ask, I would be able to get that information?
Sure. And they would basically, I think, go through the mayor's office to do it.
Okay. Thank you very much for that extra information, Solicitor Grover.
Does anyone else have any questions for Mr. Knight?
Yes, I have a question. Hi, Mr. Knight. Thanks for being here. Thank you for that thorough report. In terms of the parking, I know you mentioned the city engineer would be the one to kind of oversee that study. I met with the previous engineer and had a study done in the neighborhood that I lived in. And my concern is that there are a lot of streets that could benefit from speed, benefit to have speed bumps put on the, on those streets. So, and then there's a lot of dangerous parking. I mean, people just park on the sidewalks, and I think it's dangerous for the children. I mean, children are supposed to be able to walk on the sidewalks when they're coming from school, and that's their safe place, the sidewalks. And currently, it's, it's, I think it's dangerous right now with the parking not being enforced, the ordinance not being enforced. So that is something that I am very concerned about currently, so.
If I may.
Thank you for mentioning that.
Councilwoman Davis, I'm actually working with parking enforcement, so there is some movement there. So we're drawing up some paperwork to get the residents aware of that this enforcement is going to be coming, not just to go out and start ticketing them, just give them some time. Maybe they can self-correct this when this information's put out abroad. So to your concerns, because we're all concerned about it, but I just wanted to give you that information that something is being in motion with that enforcement.
Thank you, Councilman Jones, for that. I don't have any other questions. I will make an appointment to meet with you.
Sounds good. Thank you. Look forward to it.
Thank you. So I think that concludes this report, and then there's a second report. Is there a representative for the Community of Economic Development?
No, he requested to be moved to next week's meeting.
So I guess that concludes the reports for today.
Thank you. Our final committee business for our work session this evening will come from the Public Works Committee. I will defer to our Public Works Committee Chair, Councilman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam President. For the Public Works Committee, we will be discussing Resolution Seven of 2024. Mr. Parker, do you mind reading Resolution Seven of 2024 into the record?
Yes, sir. Resolution Seven of 2024. A resolution ratifying a services contract with Penn Waste Incorporated to continue to serve as the city's single-stream recycling disposal service.
Thank you for that, Mr. Parker. And I do see Director West here with us this evening. Bless you. Director West, how you doing this evening?
Great, great.
Always a pleasure, whenever you are prepared and ready. Can you give a review of Resolution Seven of 2024, please?
Yes, recycling contract with, it says Penn Waste, but Penn Waste was bought out by Waste Connections.
Waste Connections?
Yes, Waste Connections is one of the largest waste hauling recycling companies in North America. They're out of Canada. And throughout our years with Penn Waste, we have had continuous contracts and been, have been in negotiations throughout the years with our recycling. And then when single stream came into play, what happened is all of the small, as I, if I can say, mom-and-pop shops were bought out and closed down by the large company. And they created, they purchased a $10 million MRF, and everyone was consolidated to go to Penn Waste. And that's where we ended up, along with everyone in the surrounding communities.
Thank you. All right, and that, that's pretty much all the information. I know it's pretty brief as far as the resolution.
Well, we have, this year, renegotiated this contract going into this year for $80 a ton. And 2025 would be $85 a ton.
Can you say that one more time, Director West?
For 2024 would be $80 a ton, and 2025 would be $85 a ton.
Okay. And that would be in contrast to how much? What should it be?
What should it be?
Yeah.
Well, it, last year, it was $55 a ton. It continues to increase.
Awesome.
But if we did not take it to Penn Waste, we would pay $235 to $238 a ton for the incinerator, so.
Perfect. All right, thank you. I will open it up for questioning by my colleagues at this point. I'll start with my immediate left, Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Councilman Rodriguez. How you doing, Mr. West? That's me. Sorry about that. I was playing a little music. So I just heard what you said, Solicitor Grover. So Penn Waste selling out to Waste Connections, correct? And they'll keep their prices pretty much the same?
Well, it's contractual every.
Every year.
Every two years. This, this contract is for two years.
Okay.
And then we negotiate again. They'll come into terms and we'll have a negotiation.
Now, I heard you said it was 200 and what?
It's $230 a ton of the incinerator. We would have to throw it in the trash, and it would be in the waste and the waste. Right now, at the incinerator, we pay $230 a ton.
Okay, so now my question would be, with this Waste Connections, is there, at some point, is there a cap? Or this, just every year, we, every other year we get in the contract, it's just going to keep being a rising cost?
There's no cap. There's no cap. They, they corner the market in this entire area. And to go to another company would be closer to Philadelphia, would be a lot longer for our operators to drive. And that's why they cornered the market and shut down all of the mom-and-pop shops in the area.
Yeah, no further questions.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, Councilwoman Rawls.
Thank you, Director West, for being here and I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Thank you, uh, Madam President.
Good evening, I don't have any questions. I remember this discussion a little bit during the budget hearing, so thank you.
Thank you. Awesome, thank you, Madam Vice President.
Thank you very much. I don't have any questions for you.
Thank you. All right, Councilwoman Davis?
Thank you for being here. I don't have any questions.
Thank you. All right, um, I'll open it up one more time. Anything further for Director West while he's here? If not, I move to add Resolution Seven of two thousand twenty-four to our next legislative session. And that concludes the business for the Public Works Committee.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you.
We will now move to public comment. Just a few housekeeping notes before we begin. Um, please state your name and your address for the meeting record. If you don't feel comfortable sharing your address, please share the vicinity in which you live within the city. You now have four minutes to share your comments. Um, Mr. Parker will serve as our timekeeper and we can begin.
Hello, I'm Duwanna Gay. I'm from Harrisburg, Pennsylvania. And I'm a daycare provider. Okay, so let's get down to this business about this merchant tell license. Now, it's been months. I done talked to several people. My union people has been here with me. They had to leave, they came to support me. People in the city of Harrisburg that have daycares, they ain't backing me because they scared for retaliation, okay? Last week, it was a Zoom, I didn't get on it. The only reason why I didn't get on the Zoom is because they put Mike in the Zoom. I told the union, I said, listen, Mike can't make no changes. He's just gonna talk and tell you why you have merchant tell license and all that. So I don't like when people spin me. I come down here and I'm not, I, I try to be nice, but if you know me, because I wish Carl was here since he was talking about the merchant tell license, I'd have gave him the business. So y'all had the Zoom on the fourteenth. Today, I get a letter, never got one in fourteen years, as well as no inspection from the city of Harrisburg for these merchant tell licenses, urgent. I got ten days to pay for the merchant tell license or they gonna shut me down and take me to court. Now, I'm not, listen, I'm not about to lose my business. I'm not even gonna pay the three-ten because everybody is saying, I chased Mike down in the hallway when y'all seen me leave. Because on the Zoom, Mike said out of his own mouth, like with the merchant tell license and the family daycare, because I'm family. So I'm not a big daycare to where as you gotta come and inspect my refrigerator and all that. Cause I get that from the state, they come. So you can't come in my house from the city of Harrisburg and say, oh, this is Duwanna's food. Oh, this is the daycare food. We don't even know what they're looking for and I keep saying that. The fire department, we could have the fire department come in for free. Now we do interconnected um, smoke, uh, smoke detectors. The city don't even know that. They don't even know the regulations of the state. So I'm saying, I feel as though like the merchant tell license, if y'all wanna say, okay, Duwanna, you pay fifty dollars a year, because I don't need y'all's uh, inspections, because I get my inspections for free. But for fourteen years not to get an inspection and y'all think that's okay? I can't keep hearing, oh, we didn't have nobody to work. Wait, give me a job, I do it. I, yeah, I probably get more working for the city than doing a daycare. When I did my daycare, I didn't expect to be in my daycare for fourteen years. I grew with my families. My family comes from newborn till they go to school. Right now, I got three, that's two. And I'm like, can I make it three more years? But dealing with this situation, everybody got personal stuff going on. I, my daycare is my business, but it's not my family life. I got literally stuff going on, but I gotta wake up every day and get these kids because their moms gotta go to work. But I don't wanna keep dealing with this. I really don't. Just like the lady right here, last time I was here, her child was running around, now she can't bring her kid. I'm valued, trust me, everybody that I had my business, that been my clients, I'm valued. I don't promote myself, all of that. Most of my, my families don't even come from the inner city and that's okay. But I know that I'm valued when my kids come in the house and when the parents, they there, they come, they see what I do, every day I take pictures, learning everything. I don't have to do that because I'm a family daycare, but I do have associate's degree. So, yeah, that's it, oh, Lord, four minutes ain't long enough. Anyway, so I'm asking you guys to do something about this merchant tell license for the family daycares in Harrisburg. I can't worry about everybody else because they scared, I ain't scared. I ain't, I'm pretty much not scared enough. So if this is what they think they gonna do, they don't wanna fool with me. That's it, that's all. I know, I got a Zoom for my daycare at eight-thirty, so I gotta go.
Okay.
Thank y'all, I'll be back if I got to.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else to my right that would like to offer public comment? Okay, seeing and hearing no one, anyone in the middle section? Okay.
Good evening, everybody. My name is uh, Terrence Jackson. I live at twenty-four forty-four Mercer Street in Harrisburg, Pennsylvania. Uh, first, what I wanna do is thank you guys for your service. Um, I've been coming down here ever since the new election and everything and I really value and appreciate everything that you guys are bringing to the table. I do want to kind of uh, bring a subject up. I heard with the presentation about the forty-thousand-dollar study that was gonna be done and they were talking about assets. I think what was missing was the number-one asset in any city. And that's its people. And when you're talking about community engagement, that should be filtered through any other asset or any other initiative that you're doing. You are the representatives of the people, not of the building. That's not to say that we don't need work to be able to keep the water running and the lights on. Harrisburg's infrastructure is old, that needs to be addressed. But that needs to be addressed through the lens of the community and through the people to benefit their quality of life. That's what city planning is about. And it addresses issues when you do that, it addresses issues like you don't have to, you don't have to change the rule like they did on State Street with the parking after the community got involved. You always operate with that community engagement, with the people, through the lens of the people. You are the representatives of us. And I'll end with that, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone to my left that would like to offer public comment? That's fine.
Um, my name is Pam Hour. I live at one-twenty-four Pine Street and I work for Center for Independent Living of Central PA. And um, I was really interested in the discussion tonight about the plan, the five-year plan. Um, really hoping that when she taught, the woman in the group talked about, you know, looking for ADA access, that it's a true um, assessment of the ADA needs of all the different assets. Because you can just look and say, oh, they don't grab ours on the walls. But there are so many other features that truly make something accessible. So I'd really love any way I can to be involved with that process. Because I think that if it's done right, it could be a good chunk of the needed ADA slash five-oh-four plan that the state, or that the city um, needs and has, has not developed. So um, anyway, it can be included in that I did talk to them and they said it does have some accessibility features and they take pictures and things like that. But, and, you know, I hope it's more in-depth, but I hope it, it's a real good way to lead to priorities. Um, ADA and, and people with disabilities really haven't been a priority for a while either. So I would really like to see that, but I'm, I'm glad this is a good start. Um, when you're talking with um, them in the future for, or if you have to, um, before you vote, finding out how, how much you're really gonna get for your buck um, under the ADA, what we need. But thank you. Oh, also, I wanted to invite y'all, um, we have a new CEO at the Center for Independent Living, Brittany Chisholm Boyd. And we are, March seventh, we are going to have a kind of a welcome, um, what do you call it? Um, it's gonna be hors d'oeuvres and, and some drinks and things like that, a, a welcome for her at our Center for Independent Living. And that will be, um, we're at thirty-two eleven North Front Street, the back door, because we're in the basement there where the Chamber of Commerce is. Um, so I would love to invite you all to come out and you will get emails. Um, and if you have got an email from me, I got spammed. So if it says voicemail PDF, don't open it. I'm sorry, that just happened to me today, but thank you.
Thank you. Seeing and hearing no further public comment, the time is eight-twenty-three PM. I will entertain a motion to adjourn our work session. Is there a second? Thank you. I would like to move right into our legislative session, if that's okay? All right, would like to call our legislative session to order at eight-twenty-three PM. Mr. Parker, could you please call the roll?
Yes. Ms. Daniels. Ms. Davis.
Present.
Ms. Green.
Present.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Ms. Rawls.
Present.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Present.
And Ms. Bowers.
Present, thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Daniels had to leave, but I will lead the invocation in her absence. If everybody could just please join me in a moment of silence to continue to pray for peace within our city um, and for those bereaved families. Thank you. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilwoman Davis.
Can we all stand, please?
Thank you, Councilwoman Davis. We do not have any communications this evening. We'll move forward with courtesy of the floor. So we just had participation here, but in the event that someone else would like to participate, uh, is there anyone to my right that would like to offer a public comment? Seeing and hearing no one, anyone in the middle section? Seeing and hearing no one, anyone to my left? Seeing and hearing no one, we will move forward with the approval of minutes for the legislative session that occurred on January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four. Council members, are there any revisions to those meeting minutes? Okay, seeing and hearing none, the minutes stand approved. We will now move to the reports of committees. I will deliver the first report on the work session of, that was held earlier, of February twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four, on behalf of the Administration Committee. On Tuesday, February twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four, the Administration Committee met to discuss quarterly reports for the fourth quarter of two thousand and twenty-three from the Bureau of Information Technology, uh, the Bureau of Communications and the Office of Equity and Compliance, Resolution Five of two thousand and twenty-four and Resolution Six of two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Matt Maisel, Director of the Bureau of Communications, shared the fourth-quarter report for two thousand and twenty-three. Highlights included an overview of the Bureau, one-hundred-and-fifty tickets completed for three-one-one, production of the holiday parade, uh, discussion of the Comcast agreement and a partnership with Major Prep to produce custom apparel for the Bureau employees. Closed captioning is also available for residents. Council members asked the following questions regarding the ceiling microphone audio, leveraging social media interactions, closed captioning option if there were any legal issues, and the pros and cons of the Comcast agreement. Mr. Steve Bortner, Director of the Bureau of Information Technology, shared the fourth-quarter report for two thousand and twenty-three. Highlights included an overview of the Bureau, completion of seven-hundred-and-twelve help desk tickets, updates on the Operation Municipal Migration Project, year-to-date spend, updates on annual goals and Bureau vacancies. There were no deviations from the planned budget. There was one vacancy um, at the end of two thousand and twenty-three, that was the GIS Administrator. The vacancy has since been filled on January sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Carl Singleton, Director of the Office of Equity and Compliance, shared the fourth-quarter report for two thousand and twenty-three. Highlights included an overview of the Chief Equity and Compliance Officer Job Description. He shared city's spend data for every month of two thousand and twenty-three, reviewed annual goals, fully integrated into the municipal system and provided a lengthy list of community engagement, interaction and communication. Council members asked the following questions relating to uh, data clarification, travel inquiries, the Broad Street Market Project, equitable involvement, goals clarification and monthly data shared. Resolution Five of two thousand and twenty-four is a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Reynolds Construction LLC or SiteLog IQ to develop a comprehensive five-year capital improvement program. Mrs. Marita Kelly, Director of the Department of Budget and Finance and a team from SiteLog IQ were present to discuss Resolution Five of two thousand and twenty-four. SiteLog IQ team members provided an overview of their company, project overview. A planned report will be issued. The SiteLog IQ agreement fee is forty thousand dollars. Council members asked the following questions for fee clarification, my site IQ uh, fee structure, updates, assets um, that would be assessed during this process, implementation, active problems notification, uh, training process, community engagement, capacity, uh, diversity complement and the difference between SiteLog IQ versus the ICA. Resolution Six of two thousand and twenty-four is a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a collection, a collection agreement, excuse me, oh, that's wrong. Sorry, Resolution Six of two thousand and twenty-four is a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Helsion Interpreting Services LLC to provide sign language interpreting services. I provided an overview of the resolution, which was redrafted at the request of council. Uh, there was one question asked regarding a cost difference between providing sign language interpretation during both work and legislative sessions. I encouraged my colleagues to support Resolution Five of two thousand and twenty-four and Resolution Six of two thousand and twenty-four. Resolution Five of two thousand and twenty-four will assist in evaluating the city's assets over a five-year period. And Resolution Six of two thousand and twenty-four will continue to improve our inclusivity by ensuring all residents have access to council meeting information. This concludes the report of the Administration Committee. The next report you will hear will be shared by our Budget and Finance Committee Chair, uh, Chair Green on the work. Chair Green, on the work session of February twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Thank you, President Bowers. On February twentieth, twenty twenty-four, today, at our work session, the Budget and Finance Committee discussed Resolution Three of two thousand and twenty-four, which is a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a collection agreement with the Harrisburg School District for the collection of the business privilege and mercantile tax and amusement tax for the two thousand and twenty-four tax year. Mr. Mike Hughes was here to present. It's a recurring contract that we do pretty much every year for the past twenty years. Solicitor Grover did mention that there was some update in the language to provide clarity as to who in the city was to collect the tax, the business and mercantile tax collections, because there had been some discrepancy or some question with the Treasurer's Office. Other than that, there hadn't been any updates. I would ask my colleagues to support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. The next report you will hear will be shared from Chair Davis on behalf of the Building and Housing Committee on the work session of February twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four. Chair Davis?
Thank you, President Bowers. This evening, February twentieth, we heard from Mr. Hobbs. And this is in reference to Resolution Four dash two thousand and twenty-four, which is a resolution appointing Mr. James Hobbs to serve on the zoning hearing board of the City of Harrisburg. Mr. Hobbs was present this evening. Mr. Hobbs is currently serving on the zoning board and is replacing Matthew Pianka. Mr. Hobbs has been a resident of the City of Harrisburg since two thousand and sixteen, and he is coming from the city of Enola. Mr. Hobbs is also a real estate investor and teaches, and also volunteers in the community and supports our nonprofits and, as stated. Mr. Hobbs stated that there would not be any conflicts of interest to his knowledge and that he's interested in continuing to serve the community. Council had the opportunity to ask questions, and I encourage my colleagues to support this resolution. This concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. In the absence of Chair Daniels, on behalf of the Community and Economic Development Committee, a quarterly report was shared by Mr. Jeffrey Knight, Director of the Bureau of Planning for the fourth quarter of two thousand and twenty-three. The final committee report you will hear this evening will be shared from Chair Rodriguez on behalf of the Public Works Committee on the work session of February twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Thank you, Madam President. On February twentieth of two thousand and twenty-four, the Public Works Committee met to discuss Resolution Seven of two thousand and twenty-four. Resolution Seven of two thousand and twenty-four is a resolution ratifying a services contract with Penn Waste Inc. to continue to serve as the city's single-stream recycling disposal service. Joining us was Director West for the Public Works Department. Mr. West stated Penn Waste is what's stated on the resolution, but Waste Connections has brought out the name and is moving forward with the contract. Currently, we pay eighty dollars a ton in twenty-four, and in twenty-five, it will increase a five-dollar amount up to eighty-five dollars. Currently, we pay over two hundred dollars in fees with the incinerator, and the savings will assist the city's growth. Council had questions pertaining to the accuracy of the tonnage cost, but was briefed in discussion overall. I asked that this be placed on the next legislative session for a vote, and I highly encourage my colleagues on council to support this resolution. Thank you all this evening, and that will conclude the report of the Public Works Committee on the work session of February twentieth of two thousand and twenty-two. Thank you, Madam President.
Two thousand and twenty-four.
Two thousand and twenty-four.
We've moved on. Thank you.
Two thousand and twenty-four.
I hear you. Thank you. We will now move to ordinances for first reading. We have one, Bill Two of two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes. Bill Two of two thousand and twenty-four. An ordinance amending Title Eight of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Harrisburg, known as Building and Housing Development Code at Chapter Eight dash one zero seven by the adoption and incorporation of the twenty-eighteen edition of the ICC International Property Maintenance Code, amending further by the renewal, modification, or enactment of certain amendments to the code through Title Eight and other provisions of the Codified Ordinances, providing for the modernization of certain notice provisions, specifically providing for electronic notices and communications, adopting graduated fines for certain recurring code violations, providing for certain penalties, providing for additional matters to be subject to instantaneous citation, authorizing city reliance on certain registration records of the Pennsylvania Department of State and the United States Department of Treasury, providing for service and delivery of city-issued notices, citations, and other communications with any person subject to registration or reporting with those agencies, and otherwise provided for technical amendment.
Thank you. Bill Two of two thousand and twenty-four will move to the Building and Housing Committee. We do not have any ordinances for amendment or ordinances for final passage. We will move to resolutions. The first resolution for consideration this evening is Resolution Three of two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes. Bill Three of two thousand and twenty-four. A resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a collection agreement with the Harrisburg School District for the collection of the business privilege and mercantile tax and the amusement tax for the two thousand and twenty-four year.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution Three of two thousand and twenty-four? Okay, seeing and hearing none, Mr. Parker, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yay.
Ms. Rawls.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Bowers.
Yes.
Resolution Three of two thousand and twenty-four passes unanimously, six yays to zero nays with one absence.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution Four of two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes. Resolution Four of two thousand and twenty-four. A resolution appointing Mr. James Hobbs to serve on the zoning hearing board of the City of Harrisburg.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution Four of two thousand and twenty-four? Okay, seeing and hearing none, Mr. Parker, could you please call the vote?
Yes. Ms. Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yay.
Ms. Rawls.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Bowers.
Yes.
Resolution Four of two thousand and twenty-four passes unanimously with a vote of six yays to zero nays with one absence.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution Five of two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes, Resolution Five of two thousand and twenty-four. A resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Reynolds Construction LLC, D slash B dash A, SiteLog IQ, to develop a comprehensive five-year capital improvement program.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution Five of two thousand and twenty-four? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Parker, could you please call the vote?
Yes, Ms. Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yay.
Ms. Rawls.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
And Ms. Bowers.
Yes.
Resolution Five passes unanimously with a vote of five, I'm sorry, six yays to zero nays with one absence.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution Six of two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution Six of two thousand and twenty-four. A resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Halcyon Interpreting Services LLC to provide sign language interpreting services.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution Six of two thousand and twenty-four? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Parker, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yay.
Ms. Rawls.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Bowers.
Yes.
Resolution Six of two thousand and twenty-four passes unanimously with a vote of six yays to zero nays, including one absence.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution Seven of two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes, Resolution Seven of two thousand and twenty-four. A resolution ratifying a services contract with Penn Waste Incorporated to continue to serve as the city's single-stream recycling disposal service.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution Seven of two thousand and twenty-four? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Parker, could you please call the vote?
I do have a question addressed to our city solicitor. So the wording would change from Penn Waste to was Waste Connections?
It will not. So the contract is ratifying as signed. So their acquisition that they were using was the name of the company that was local.
Okay, all right. Wonderful. Thank you. Ms. Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yay.
Ms. Rawls.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Bowers.
Yes.
Resolution Seven of two thousand and twenty-four passes unanimously with a vote of six yays to zero nays, including one absence.
Thank you. As I mentioned earlier, Resolution Eight of two thousand and twenty-four will be discussed next Tuesday, February twenty-seventh, and voted upon. We will move to Resolution Nine of two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes, Resolution Nine of two thousand and twenty-four. A resolution of the city, I'm sorry, a resolution of the council of the City of Harrisburg authorizing and appointing Daniel Snow, City Engineer, as the city's designated to execute any forms and documents in the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation's electronic reimbursement agreement system.
Thank you. Resolution Nine of two thousand and twenty-four will move to the Public Works Committee. Next, we have Resolution Ten of two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution Ten of two thousand and twenty-four. A resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with WCA Public Safety Assessments for the purpose of providing psychological testing and assessment for the city's Bureau of Police.
Thank you. Resolution Ten of two thousand and twenty-four will move to the Public Safety Committee. Next, Resolution Eleven of two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution Eleven of two thousand and twenty-four. A resolution approving the disposal of certain personal property owned by the City of Harrisburg, Bureau of Police, which has exhausted its useful life for city operations.
Thank you. Resolution Eleven of two thousand and twenty-four will also move to the Public Safety Committee. Next, Resolution Twelve of two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution Twelve of two thousand and twenty-four. A resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to enter into a professional services agreement with Mayor Dussel PC for the purpose of providing audit preparation services to the City of Harrisburg.
Thank you. Resolution Twelve of two thousand and twenty-four will move to the Budget and Finance Committee. Our final resolution for this evening is Resolution Thirteen of two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes. Resolution Thirteen of two thousand and twenty-four. A resolution approving the first proposed twenty-twenty-four budget reallocation in order to reclassify certain allocations to authorize the roll forward of the certain twenty-twenty-three budget year encumbered commitments and to reaffirm certain twenty-twenty-three capital project appropriations.
Thank you. Resolution Thirteen of two thousand and twenty-four will also move to the Budget and Finance Committee. Council members, is there any old business for discussion? Seeing and hearing none, any new business?
Yes, Madam President. Just wanted to send everyone a reminder, the City of Harrisburg, in partnership with the Harrisburg School District, will have our monthly parent task force meeting here tomorrow at five-thirty in council chambers. And we have a few great guests, including Ms. Bates from Dolphin County Drug and Alcohol. So please stop by if you have a grievance for the district or you just want to learn more about just being responsible and stepping up. We'll be here from five-thirty to seven tomorrow.
Thank you. Is there any other new business? Okay, seeing and hearing none, the time is eight forty-eight PM. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone.